See. Looks like this is working.
Yes, I can hear you.
And can you see me?
Yes.
All right, cool. Thanks, Alvin.
All right.
Oh.
Where's Marvin?
We have a forum.
Painful.
And we are now unmuted, permission?
Might as well stand up soon.
There you go. Get that chair out if you need more legroom. Just move it. There you go.
You can come sit over here if you would like, question.
There he is, everybody. Okay, now, now.
Oh, we got four left.
Just getting prosthesis. I'll try. Good for you. Gosh, okay, we'll get underway here. Good evening. The November sixth, two thousand twenty-five, Washington County Planning Commission has called the order. I'll call the roll. Kelvin Barton, La Hamid, I'm here. Right? Brad Brown. On his way to the knockout finals. Okay. Daniel Brown?
Yes.
Jim Hanson?
Yes.
Julie Jefferson? I see you up there, Julie.
I'm sorry, here.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dominic with Terry?
Here.
I'm Scott Van Day.
Here.
All right. Please join me for the flight, please. So.
I can like that. Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, and to the Republic, or which stands. Foundation, individual, liberty, and justice for all. That's a long way to go.
Okay. So, um. I'm now for open session for public comment. Eileen is our planning commission coordinator. Eileen, would you take over, please?
Yes. Welcome to the meeting. The meeting is being broadcast live and will be updated, uploaded to our website. As stated on our website. Uh, the public comments cannot be presented if there is a public hearing tonight. There is no public hearing, so you're. Feel free to talk about. Uh, what you like. You're given three minutes to speak. We'll start with those in the room first, and then we'll move to the attendees online. If you are attending online and you want to speak during this time, have your hand raised and I'll call on you shortly. Um, I will ask those in the room first, if you would like to give a public comment at this time. Yes, and then if you can state your name for the record.
I'm Holly Kuhn for the record.
And you can stand over at the podium.
You have me at the podium. Sorry, I shouldn't have said, all right, I have to get used to like the harvest rules instead of the pack. I'm Holly Kuhn, um, for the record, and I am here on behalf of the forestry advisory committee. Um, who reviewed the forest, um, resource land section. Um, of the comp plan at our, uh, November general meeting on Tuesday. And had any comments? Um, first comment is, uh, we could see that our prior input had been taken into account, and we want to thank people involved in that staff, consultants, and the planning commission. Um, definitely could see, um, that our voices have been heard. We had a few further, um, comments, a couple of things that maybe weren't. Um, interpreted exactly as we meant them to be interpreted, again with. And I think you all maybe have a copy in front of you. If not, I brought hard copies if you want them, of some of the, um, edits that we wanted, we're hoping, I'm to get support for.
Oh, yeah, I think they have that.
Um, yeah, you should have it already, but if you don't have it pulled up in front of you. The first, um, edit number one, I'm gonna, um, skip quickly because it is self-explanatory. The language that we were looking for, um, is in edit number one. You can just read it. Um. Number two, policy eight, G eighteen, should clarify that the pack wants the county to support the convening of a forest collaborative, which is a specific. Type of committee and a specific structure that has been utilized in other counties, um, to, uh, coordinate with the U.S. Forest Service on timber harvests. Um, and the way that it's currently written in the comp plan draft makes it sound like, um, the county should just convene another. Collaborative committee that sounds very similar to the Forest Resiliency Task Force that we just went through. So they, the meaning of forest collaborative was lost. Um, in there. And number three, fact does not support the policy that says the county should explore rezoning rural forest, ready commercial chemistry. That's just, that's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, policy four maybe requires that, or number four in policy eight, G eighteen, maybe requires just a quick clarification. Um, the way that the paragraph in policy eight, G, it is the, under the seventh bullet. Um, is written. Um, what we're essentially asking for is that the, uh, the third word timber is struck and replaced. With the words, the individual forest management plan. So it's, rather than reading timber management plans, it would say the individual forest management plans. That were submitted to the county. Uh. Number five is a self-explanatory, asking that the planning commission would just strike policy eight, G seventeen. And then number six. Um, add mention of the state's worst practice rules. Um, in eight, G four, and I can point you. Basically just say as per the forest practice rules, just add that those words fixes the, it's a concern. Um. It, it's right before the blue highlighted section, so just insert the words as per the, um, as per the forest practice rules, uh, just prior to that.
Time.
Um, I can stick around for a few minutes if, um, anybody has questions during the general meeting.
Yeah, I will have questions, uh, for you when we get to these particular clauses that you're referencing. So I don't know if you have that much time.
I can stay until six thirty. Are we gonna get there?
Have a chance.
Okay.
Thank you for your service beyond us.
Seeing no one else in the room that wishes to speak, we will move to the attendees online. I have Bill Guyer with his hand up first. Bill Guyer, do you wish to speak at this time?
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. For the record, Bill Guyer, Guyer Associates, and as you've heard before, I'm, uh, certified by the American Institute Certified Planners and have been active, uh. In many areas of planning and, uh, commenting here to the planning commission. I'm here tonight to report to you that you're probably aware. That the Blaine Resolution two oh two five dash oh seven has passed by the Blaine voters with a sixty-four percent yes vote. This was for the deannexation of the area that is known as Grandas Pond. On the east Blaine that you have looked at a couple of times now in pursuit of looking at Blaine's UGA proposal. Uh, this now is, uh, will be removed from the city limits. It's the only way that it can happen. I believe it's only the second deannexation that's been approved. In the state of Washington, but two-thirds of the voters have approved it. And so I'd just like to comment to give the Blaine staff, particularly Alex Wagner and others, a little comfort here, a little break. Uh, I know they caught a lot of, uh. Uh, criticism from various planning commissioners in the past because of they came forward here a couple of times. But please understand that with the city council elections that have recently occurred and this proposition, it was really destabilizing, I think. What the city could prevent, propose to you with a, a clear proposal, but now. With the deannexation having been approved by the voters, you can now take, move to looking at the. West UGA and other UGAs that will come forward for Blaine at a future meeting. I also wanted to comment that there was, uh. A misunderstanding by the Watkins County Council where they had voted, uh, six to one, where they were opposed to an expansion of the West Blaine UGA. Well. One week later, when the county council attorney spoke to the council, they said, quote. Law does not support what the council was doing at the last meeting. In other words. When the council took a vote to say that they were discouraging West UGA, uh, uh, West Blaine UGA expansion. They did not have the ability to do that because as the planning commissioners know. Only the UGAs must, they first must come through your body. The county code and state law provides that the planning commission prepares findings of fact and recommendations. So the county council acted way too prematurely. And that vote that was out there primarily because of lobbying by special interest within the, uh, Birch Bay area. Um, the count, that motion is, uh, negated and does not work. So we'll be returning to proper procedure for the, for you, the planning commission, to consider all the information. And we really hope that when you do that, you'll see the value of looking at the West Blaine UGA proposal. In the context of all the other, uh, issues that you're dealing with in this comp plan. And so thank you for your continued service. I know you guys are slogging through a lot, but thanks again. We appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment. Jack Hovenier, do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Jack Hovenier. I'll speak very briefly. I will be here for the, uh, entire meeting. When we get to the Columbia Valley UGA, I'm available for questions. I appreciate the. Uh, attention you've given to the information I brought before the planning commission regarding, uh, the distribution of density, and that's the only comment I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Gross. Do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, my name is, uh, uh, first of all, thank you so much for your service. I know the comp plan is a big, uh, task and you've been at it for a while. I'm here to speak about the comp comprehensive plan. Most specifically, more specifically about the proposals that have to do with the South U, uh, UGA reserve. I'm also speaking, uh, for, um. David Roberts, who is the science advisor for People for Lake Patton. A- a- and I was also, I'm also, uh, representing People for Lake Patton. Um, I'm, I'm, I strongly recommend that you remove the South U. UGA reserve. AKA, the Lake Patton watershed from the UGA reserve status. The geography for this area makes the entire southern portion, portion of U Street Hill prone to heavily influence Lake Patton's water quality. A LiDAR map, which we've sent you. Of the area shows multiple steep slopes, ravines, wetlands, and critical areas, making the prospect of development there both costly and scant. This topography allows everything in its path to flow into Lake Patton. Urban growth would mean impacting critical wildlife corridors and water quality. Lake Patton's water quality already is at risk of eutrophication. Each year, the lake experiences a huge growth in algal blooms. Urban development will continue, will contribute to excess phosphorus being delivered to the lake, hastening its decline. This area is also chock full of wildlife. I hike in the Samish Crest open space several times every week. And I have encountered coyotes, bobcats, deer, raccoons, owls, and rabbits. A neighbor's property abuts the forest, and he has collected a series of videos of cougars passing through the property with. It is notable that Lake Patton Park is used year round by tens of thousands of Bellingham County residents who spend time there. Canoeing, kayaking, swimming, picnicking with their families. We should not make decisions that increase the probability that we. We'd need to restrict public use of this lake because we've allowed it to degrade. By saying this area of Samish Crest and the lake. Main as an urban growth area reserve. Basically, that this is an area likely to be urban in the. There's not going to be a change in the geog- the lake's watershed. To improve the lake's water quality. Indeed, it, I think it's safe to say that eutrophic, the lake is going to increase over time, even if no more development is allowed. Please remove this area from UGA reserve status. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other attendees online that wish to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no other hands raised, chair.
All right, thank you, Eileen. Well, now it's time for permission or comments. Any wish to comment, please, please refer.
Yeah, it's got a, I don't know, it's a comment or a question, but, um, as was said by one of the, um. Audience members. Uh, I thought that the council had rescinded, they rescinded, looks like some of those motions, but then went and made new motions. How is that not still inappropriate and out of sequence?
Uh. I can't speak to the inappropriateness or inappropriateness of the sequencing, but yes, they. The motions they made two weeks ago, um, were determined to be incorrect, uh, from a procedural standpoint by the, uh, attorney for the council. So what they did yesterday at committee of the whole was to rescind those four motions. And, uh, propose, and they passed four new motions that were apparently procedurally correct according to the attorney, so, um. First of those. Was, and I'll, I'll just read them. We sent this to you guys.
Well, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead, read them.
All right, uh, motion approved to confirm council support for Blaine's UGA, not including expansions in Birch Point. Uh, and brand areas three, four, and six on the draft EIS maps that were, uh, portions of those that, uh, extended south of Lincoln Road. Um. The next motion was to, the motion approved, council approved to confirm council support for the Bellingham UGA proposal. As presented on the map, uh, UGA, uh, dash two, page nine of the Bellingham UGA proposal, and that's on your agenda tonight. Um, so councils, uh, given from their signal again that it's, they've, um, they are supportive of that, of the Bellingham's proposal. Uh. Next motion, uh, was to, uh. Prove to confirm council support for retaining Ferndale's, um. Existing, uh, twenty sixteen comprehensive plan map as proposed, and that new G A dash four. Uh, of the Ferndale UGA proposal, that is also on your agenda tonight. Um, and their last motion approved. Uh, to confirm council support for Linden's UGA proposal as described on map UGA dash five. That's not on your agenda tonight, but, um. That's just a, uh, another sort of indication of where the councils. I wanted to weigh in on those things, provide guidance. Both to the cities, I think, as well as informationally to you guys, so.
Don't feel the same as before. I, I, I was just saying, I don't, I, a little, a little tweak, yeah, I, I don't like it. I think that as eager as they may be, they should follow the. Normal procedure of like planning commission finish.
Do you have a wish to comment? Okay, let's move along to our meeting topic, and, uh, you have. I see you up there, um. Do you want to, uh, do introduce this, or, um, are we looking, I'm looking, there are a number of staff people here, so, but. I see you right there in your smiling face, so I'll start with you.
Yeah, so.
Which for chapter eight?
All right, thanks, Kelvin. Yeah, um, Matt Almond, representing Planning and Development Services, so. The planning commission, uh, held public hearings on the urban growth area proposals in September. And so you're returning back for work sessions to make preliminary recommendations, and tonight would be on Bellingham, Ferndale, and the Columbia Valley urban growth area.
All right.
So we have Chris Beehe here from the city of Bellingham. He can. Give a brief overview. They made a detailed presentation last time, but I think he wanted to say a few words, um, for you tonight.
Thank you, Matt. I just saw his face pop up and I was gonna ask him that myself. Hey, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, I really, uh, I don't have a lot to add to the presentation, um, on the September twenty fifth. Um, I do have. I guess two exhibits I would, I. I think might be helpful to share with you. If I can share my screen, I'll show you those and then, um, I'm happy to just respond to questions. Um. Let's see, I think I've got. Can you see my screen on your?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So the first, the first thing I wanted to show you, uh, we discussed, uh. In the previous session on the twenty fifth, the, uh. Population capacity based on Bellingham's housing. And I just wanted to clarify with the, uh, the exhibit you can see here before you. Um, and, and this is using the, uh, the, the countywide planners group discussed with Leland, who was the consultant that, uh. Um, provided the modified. Model based on the Commerce's housing allocation tool. And, uh, I think the key piece we weren't discussing before was the amount of housing. Um, capacity for each of the jurisdictions and you can see this first column here shows Bellingham's estimated land capacity. Uh, eighteen thousand, almost eighteen thousand nine hundred housing units. And then the variety of housing, uh, types, uh. Related to different zoning categories that those housing units fall into. Um, what we did not show you before was, uh, the. Allocation of housing based on the two separate columns you see here and that there, there is. Uh, the majority of that new housing is for in migration or, or new population growth, if you will, over the next twenty years. But that there is an important piece of that is, that is also for people that are currently unhoused that are in our community today. Um, so our homeless population and also the, the people that are particularly at the, the lower rungs of the economic ladder. Uh, lower income households that are not even subsidized housing. They're just paying way more than they should for their housing, maybe fifty percent or sometimes even more. Um, and having to kind of make those hard choices between, you know, food, medical bills, rent, those kinds of things. So it's. It's that piece that comes out, um. And, uh, added with this gets to the, the, um. Total housing unit. Capacity that we have, but when you take just this seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty seven unit capacity. That would be housing allocated for, for new people coming that don't live here today. It's a capacity of about thirty one thousand one thirty seven. And when you compare that to our. Allocated growth of just over thirty thousand, that it translates to between a two and a three percent surplus. Um, the same as our, our housing unit surplus that just kind of, um. Match up at that point, but that gives you that kind of additional math that is happening is. It's a way that we, we haven't done it this way before, um, previous to this, uh, periodic update, the. Uh, the county and the cities always just based. Housing units, um, and compared that with OFM's persons per household and occupancy rates and came up with a number. But this is again, based on that House Bill twelve twenty requirement, we now are accounting for housing for. Um, some of those folks that, that like I said, don't have housing or they're in housing that's, that's, uh, more costly than what they can afford. So that. That means that part of that capacity goes to those folks. So. So that gives you a, a, a more accurate picture of what the surplus is. It's really not ten percent. It's closer to, uh, like I said, between two and three percent. Um, and then I did have one additional piece. I showed you, uh, the different. Slides of our housing capacity by income. Um, focusing particularly on the, the left side of the graph inside that dashed blue line, which are the, the categories. Um, below eighty percent of median income. And, and this is that graph that shows the, um, the orange bars are the capacity that we're trying to meet. The gray bars are the housing we already have and the blue bars are the new housing that we think will be built based on our future zoning and resources. And this is that version that shows, you know, based on the fourteen million dollars that Bellingham is able to. Pull together from a variety of funding buckets each year and allocate to building affordable rental housing. And then providing those wraparound services that go with that. Um, this is showing. How we think that would play out given current funding models. Um. Again, the, the fifty to eighty percent AMI. We have an excess in that category and that's largely because we don't provide subsidies in that income category for the most part. That's the, the market rate. Uh, rents that you find in Bellingham are largely in that area. And that's where you see that large supply of multifamily housing that we have. Um, both existing and future capacity, um, showing us a surplus in that category. And it's these lower income categories, the two lowest in particular, the, um, zero to thirty. Percent median income and, and the, um, that being split into, uh, zero to thirty percent, um, uh. Um, regular housing and then the zero to thirty percent permanent supportive, which are the ones that have those like onsite case management, counseling. And other kinds of behavioral health services or physical needs services. Um, showing that, you know, we, we really have. Very limited capacity. Um, we're pouring a lot of money into that, but, um, feel like that fourteen million a year really is. Is going to satisfy about seventeen hundred. Um, and when you count these, uh, two hundred and fifty some units in the permanent supportive category, you know. Total of, of just somewhere under, uh, eighteen hundred units when we really need, uh, many, many more than that. And then jumping to this slide, this shows if you were to. Pull out of that, that kind of, uh, fifty to eighty percent market rate category. And provide more financial subsidies, more rent vouchers, more permanent supportive housing with wraparound services and those kinds of things. That you could fully fill those buckets in the lower end with that capacity. We have the land capacity. Um, but then there's this, this red note here shows you what we would need in addition to that fourteen million we're spending right now. We would need to pull together about another hundred and thirty million per year to satisfy that need. And that was based on, um, Commerce in their guidebook has a, a table based on the low income housing tax credit. Projects in every county in the state and they have a number for each county. For Watkins County, the average price per unit of housing for affordability is about four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to build a single unit. Um, and when I talk with our, our housing. Programs manager here at the city, based on the, um, quality of construction required for the affordable housing projects. Um, it's a little bit higher standard than you would have for normal spec construction. Uh, that's really closer to five hundred thousand dollars per unit. And so given that. Roughly, uh, six thousand or so unit shortfall that we're looking at in those lower income categories. We would need, uh, basically multiply the current resources we have by about ten. Um, to get, uh, to be able to push those units out of that. Market rate kind of middle category into those lower three buckets. Um. And, and it doesn't, it's not the majority of the units, but I will say this, the, the zero to thirty percent. Uh, AMI with permanent supportive services. Would absorb a very large portion of that just because of the additional. Funding needed, not just for building those units, but in perpetuity, having onsite case management and those professional. Services folks with all those skills, um, twenty-four seven onsite. So those are, those are some of the things that. Um, just, I just kind of wanted to paint a picture for you about the, the shortfall. We feel like we've got the, the land for these different housing forms. Most of them fall into the multifamily housing form kind of building code category. Um, but it's just those resources to really pull off the, um, construction, subsidize the rents and then provide those services that are super challenging for us. So again, um, we're doing. Some of that, um, and we think we can continue doing. At, at the level we're currently doing it, we can continue to build more, but you can see that these amounts that we will be able to pull off. Are, um, just don't meet the need that's out there. So, um, I think that's everything I wanted to say, um. Uh, and happy to bounce back into what I presented previously if you, uh, have any other questions.
Okay, I, Commissioner Brown have the question, great, go ahead.
Uh, most of apologies for being late. It took me an hour to do a fifteen minute trip. Um, oof. Yeah, it's awful. Uh. Chris, I really struggled with this belt when I saw it, because. If, if the model to provide this housing. A shoot requires a hundred and thirty million dollars in here. There are ninety eight, the population of Bellingham's ninety eight thousand. You, you divide that by two point four to give you an average for a household. That's an additional three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per household. That we're going to have to tax them in order to provide affordable housing. And, and it's just not a sustainable approach and. And my struggle, the, the deeper I get into the housing issue, my fundamental struggle. Is we keep looking for solutions that require us raising more money. As opposed to doing solutions that reduce the cost. So, really my question is, what is Bellingham going to do to reduce? The cost of providing housing. Rather than just forecasting that we need to provide more housing, getting increasing, increasingly expensive cost per unit.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I would say I agree one hundred percent with your assessment. Um, it's an enormous number. I will say that, that. That cost per, um. Unit, that five hundred thousand number per unit is something that, um, the way the, the funds are arranged today, you know, we leverage. Our local dollars at about a one to eight ratio with federal and state, like federal, uh, you know, state housing finance commission. The community block rent dollars from, uh, the federal government. So it's not all local money. Uh, a, a large portion of it is local money, though, the, the affordable housing sales tax and the home levy. So. Um, but yeah, you're right. I mean, to get to that hundred and thirty million. If we were to imagine on, on any of the initiatives, whether it's, it's greenways or affordable housing or anything else, the school district, if we were to multiply that by a factor of ten, it, it's just not. Tenable in our current, you know, given our. The structures that we live in, in this society, we just aren't going to get there doing it that way. Um, I, I would say, you know, every city in the state is struggling with all the same issues and probably the whole country for that matter. Um. The, the levers that we have to pull as local government are, you know, the land use and zoning pieces, which again, we're doing our best to. Simplify processes. Uh, Bellingham is, you know, this is a, a once in a generation, um, or multiple generations increase in density for Bellingham. With all the middle housing, um, pieces and then our urban villages on top of that. Um. That will probably have some. Some effect on land value citywide, uh, difficult to say what, um, that is going to be and we'll, you know, we're obviously going to be paying close attention to that. Over the coming years. Um, but no, you're right. I mean, there are, um, market, market forces at work here that are, um, way beyond what. You know, Bellingham and Watkins County and the other cities have, um, have influence over, but this is, um. You know, we feel like the language changes that we've made this go around are, are the biggest step. Um, that we've taken, like I said, in, in, um. In the entire time that we've had a zoning code. So, um, we feel like we're, we're making a good effort. Uh, and just having to make peace with the fact that we know it will never be enough, but we hope that we can move the needle farther than we have in the last, say, ten years.
My, my point is, Chris, and I'm not blaming you, but I just, I just, I just want this elephant to be identified in the room. We're not gonna, we're not going to achieve any of these goals unless we start driving the cost down. Because. You know, nothing, in my entire time in government, when I was an elected. I don't, you know, looking back at it, I don't remember ever being presented. With a proposal that would reduce the cost of housing. Everything we got, every, every bit of zoning change. Every legislative change to the code always increased the cost of housing. And so my, my frustration is all these numbers are sort of to me. Pie in the sky because if it. If we don't reduce the cost of housing, you're just gonna have to increase the number of people you have to. Provide subsidies for, for affordable housing. So, I'll, I'll yield at the point.
Yeah, I, I will say I, I would highlight that, you know, it is, it is, um. It's a staggering number, but I will say that, um, you know, we find some. I don't know if I'd say glimmers of hope or, but there are some positive things about these. Uh, code changes and programs in that, you know, Bellingham's been able to build over seventeen hundred affordable units. Um, fully subsidized over the past, uh, you know, uh, years that we've had the housing levy. Um. We, we will be in front of the voters again in twenty twenty eight to renew that levy. Um. It remains to be seen what, how much that will be. It was forty million over ten years, the last time it was renewed. Um. And there are things like the, uh, uh, before the city council right now, it's been through planning commission. Um, but before the city council right now are the, um, the co-living. Uh, housing regulations which are, um. You know, that's the, the single room occupancy rental format, which we've seen a little bit in Bellingham and we're trying to encourage a lot more of that. And. While that may not be everybody's first choice for housing, it does provide. A, uh, you know, a safe, um, convenient housing form for people at the fifty percent. AMI income level, um, without subsidy. So that is, you know, some of those smaller. Um, uh, forms that are located, you know, on bus routes, near services are things that are. Are serving some people in our community and we hope will serve more. Um, going back to kind of the rooming boarding houses that were very common in the last century, um, all over the country.
Chris, can I interrupt for a moment? And you, you, I think you've explained it, uh, pretty well what Bellingham is doing, but we have some more people would like to ask questions and.
Sure, yep, sorry. I'm happy to, happy to respond. Go ahead.
Um, and I say it's, and, and Commissioner Hanson's waiting, but Commissioner Dunn was next, so go ahead. And then let's see, we got a lot of question after that, but go ahead.
Um, Chris, I got your proposal in front of me dated, uh, September fifteenth. Is that the most current proposal?
Uh, September fifteenth?
Yeah.
I think that's probably the, the one that we, uh, submitted to the planning commission prior to the September twenty fifth presentation. So that, that is. With the exception of those two exhibits, I just showed you that, that highlight a little more detail on the, um. What the capacity surplus actually is, and then also that, uh, putting a number to the deficit and funding. Um, that is the, the most current proposal.
Right, um, could you run us the numbers there? Cause mine are a little bit different than what you have. What is your population growth allocation?
Uh, thirty thousand three hundred and ten.
Excellent. What's your population growth capacity of the proposed UGA?
The, uh, that's that number I highlighted for you. It's the, uh, hang on a second here. Thirty one thousand one hundred and thirty seven.
Okay, yes, I think in your proposal you got thirty three thousand, small difference.
Yeah, so that's the number, that's the number I was explaining to you. That's if you just took the housing production capacity. And allocated it all to new people moving to the community as opposed to having a piece of it peeled off for cost burdened and homeless, uh, uh, households.
Okay. Sounds good.
Chris, I'm proud of you. That's it, that's it. Commissioner Hanson.
Um, we've been seeing so many different proposals. I wonder if we could just cut to the chase. And you could tell us what the current proposal is so we could see if we can approve it.
Um, yeah, if I can share my screen again, again, it should be the, the boundary proposal and the, uh, overall. Housing employment and population are, the allocations are the same as what we shared before with you.
What I mean is the map, what do you want to expand and what do you want to contract?
Oh, sure. Yeah, hang on, I can bounce right to that.
Got to the case, yeah.
So this, this shows the, um. Whoops. What we would propose for our UGA. And so just kind of going around, uh, the, the gray is the city limits in the middle, the. The lavender or purple color is our, what we would, uh, propose our UGA B. And, um. You can see on the, uh. Areas that are west and north of the airport, we're pers- uh, proposing that those areas lying between Bellingham and Ferndale. Are put into reserve status and that's a combination of mostly light industrial with a little bit of general commercial right along the I five corridor. Um, at the north end, uh, we are proposing to bring in the North Bellingham UGA reserve, which is the. South half of the Kai Tech, uh, ownership, that's the North Bellingham Golf Course. And then right in this area here, if you can see my mouse moving around, uh, south of Larson Road. Outside of the current reservoir, there are, um. There's a row of, uh, six tax parcels. Um, that would square off that boundary and give us access to the Larson Road right away for potential, uh, transportation access into that site. And then, um. The existing UGA here and here and here, and then we are proposing to drop. The areas, uh, east of, uh, Britton Road and south of McLeod Road, um. Kind of called, usually we call it the Hillsdale UGA, that's in the Lake Watkins watershed. And then the Geneva area that is entirely within the Lake Watkins watershed. Uh, and then in the U Street area, we're proposing to leave the north part of that intact as urban growth area as it is today. And the south area, we are proposing to leave in the UGA reserve status that it's also in today. Um, and leave that for future consideration, um, in, in a, in a future periodic update. And you could see the net change overall, um. Our current UGA, um. Our current UGA um. From the twenty sixteen plan is just under twenty three thousand acres. The uh, revised UGA shown again in that lavender color here is um, twenty one thousand seven hundred some acres. Uh, so it's a net, a net change. Uh, it's about twelve hundred and seventy two acres smaller than what we started with.
Go ahead. So do we need a, a motion in terms of approving this proposal so we can discuss it and seek amendments?
Yes, uh. I don't know that um. I don't know that we actually need a motion to be able to discuss it and change it. Um, we are going to eventually approve a motion, you know, a, a presentation that they give us. So I don't know that we. Need a motion to approve it. And then amend, but amend it. But it might be part of the process tonight. But if you're interested in making a motion, it's okay, but I would like to ask Chris one thing before you do that. Okay, Chris, I want to ask you a question. Um, you, you talked about affordable housing, but I actually never heard you talk about affordable housing. What I. Heard you talk about was shifting the burden of the cost of housing to one group while taking it away from another. And that certainly makes it easier for that other group to be able to buy. And I, and I like that. Well, actually you didn't say buy, you said plant. And I wanted to ask you the question, what are you doing? To make housing more affordable for people to be able to purchase a home? What is Bellingham doing?
Sure. Um, I think the biggest thing that, that we're doing. In that, in, both in uh, affordability and, and most importantly, in homeownership opportunities. Would be with the uh, compliance that we've, we're moving forward with uh, an interim. Uh, we had interim rules adopted in May of this year. And uh, we're working on more permanent rules that will be uh, adopted. Uh. Uh, we'll have a revised interim by the end of this year that's going forward to council. On uh, the seventeenth, next uh, a couple, a week or so out from here. And then um, we'll have final permanent regulations uh, in twenty twenty six, uh, we estimate by second quarter. And those are the, the middle housing rules. And so we've expanded. Um, uh, in all of the areas that are currently zoned residential single, which is about seventy percent of the land area for the city. We've uh, are changing that from single family zoning to a uh. Low, uh, what we're calling residential low zone. That still allows single family detached forms, but also allows a wide variety of middle housing. Um, so your, your um, townhomes. Uh, a variety of attached forms, uh, that could be duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, uh cottage housing, um ADUs. Um. A, a wide variety of, of things in addition to residential, single detached housing.
And, and I don't, really don't want to interrupt you. I do want to ask one more question and I know that Commissioner Hanson. That we don't want to get to nine o'clock and not be done and be coming back again next time and. And uh, but I, can I interrupt? I want to ask a question because I've never been able to figure this out, but. The last I heard um. Bellingham had mitigation fees. So if I come in and I buy a piece of property. And um. I want to build a house that Bellingham, is Bellingham still charging a mitigation fee?
We charge uh, impact fees. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, and that could be an impact fee. And so what are those running now?
So we have, we have impact fees for transportation, for parks and for schools. The school fees we collect on behalf of the school district. Um, they're all in the process of being revised, but they run um. Between three and four thousand dollars per impact fee. Um. And I, I think one of the more important things is for builders that choose to build affordable housing, we waive uh, eighty percent of those fees. Uh, both the impact fees and system development charges.
What would be, what would be the total of all those fees if I were going to Bellingham and going to build a house? What would I have to pay out?
You, um, with the system development charges, so in other words, what you pay for a new water or sewer connection um, and the meter fee. And um, and then those impact fees again for transportation, schools and parks. Uh, I, I don't have an exact number for you, but it's in the range of, of thirty thousand dollars.
And, and, and that's what I thought and, and, and. I'm going, Bellingham, I remember reading a while back, Bellingham didn't have all of those fees, had some of them, but not all of them. But when you put that on a house. Like, let's say I'm the first person to pay that thirty thousand. Everybody else and, and every house after me is going to pay that thirty thousand. And really, um. The market just said the value of every house in Bellingham just went up thirty thousand. And. Some things I understand you have to. You have to have the, the builder pay for it. But overall, these fees, you just, when you put a thirty thousand dollar fee on all the new construction, all the old construction just went up thirty thousand. And they're all there permanently. So everybody that comes into Bellingham. Is going to have an extra thirty thousand in their mortgage that they're going to pay on for thirty years. And when that thirty years is up and they're going to sell that house, they're not going to say, well, wow, I'll give you. That thirty thousand fee I paid for, they're sending it on to the seller. I just want to ask. How you guys? Um, how do you consider that or what? How do you justify that?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't control the market value of the existing housing stock. Um.
Isn't it true that if you throw a thirty thousand on every single new house? That every single existing house? That it appraises against is going to be higher?
I, I haven't seen data that shows that. Um, yeah, I haven't. I mean, we've been collecting these fees for quite a number of years. Um. And that's, you know, it's a, it's a, uh, most cities in Washington that have the infrastructure requirements. Um, that, that's the most common way to pay for those, to, to get private development to help shoulder the cost of that new infrastructure.
And so I'm, I'm not trying to pick on you, but I, I think that was. You know, fairly logical and kind of math we learned a long time ago. And I know that you're representing Bellingham. And I don't expect you to say something. But I just want to bring it up that I really believe that impacts the cost of housing. And getting rid of some of that is helpful to make housing more affordable for all, everyone.
Yeah, I think just, just to finish off, you, you asked about what are we doing for affordability? There's the general land use things I'm describing about additional. A lot of additional capacity in Bellingham. The other major pieces are the regulatory form to, the regulatory reform to simplify the process. Um, you talked to developers and the design review process, but it has been quite onerous. Um, and that is being uh, simplified greatly to a purely objective. Clear and objective process where it's a, a menu of choices and administratively approved. No required neighborhood meeting for approval of a project. Um, and then just the, the streamlined development approval process. So there are. Things that we're doing that take big chunks of time out of the approval process for permits and for uh, land use enablement. Uh, proposal, you know, proposals for new short plats and those kinds of things. So those are. Those are also significant steps that do i- i- in really real ways affect the bottom line for the cost of construction.
Right. Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
Oh, and thank you very much. Um. When, when we refer to the part of the reserve UGA that's a lake pad and. Watershed, how do we technically re- refer to it? The part of the south U, et cetera, but how? What part is the lake watershed? Lake Patton watershed in that regard?
Oh, um, well, I, if you, if you overlay, I don't have an exhibit to pull up for you, but if you overlay the Lake Patton watershed and the South U Street UGA area. Um, the uh. I'm not sure about the easterly boundary up against Galbert Mountain, but the north boundary uh, near the, the transition between the north and the south. U Street UGA areas, it's very close to that. Um. You know, the, the, the zoning line based line that the boundary is today follows the actual natural drainage divide very closely. It's, it's not an exact fit, but it's very close.
Okay, South U Street, okay. Thank you.
That, that, that area on the north side of that crosshatched. Area there between the gray and the crosshatching. The drainage divide is, if you drew the drainage divide, it would, it would. For the most part, follow that boundary between those two areas.
Alright. Anything else, Commissioner Hanson? No, thank you. Commissioner Dunn, go ahead.
Um, I, I was thinking everybody has motions to make about this proposal. It's getting on seven o'clock. Um, want to make those motions? If nobody does, I'd be happy to make a motion to uh, pass on to council. I'll take it.
Alright, and I'll let that.
So Chris, two things, I, I'm, I'm going to vote against this and. The reason I'm going to vote against this is, is. I don't agree with the solution to that affordable housing thing as to like a hundred and thirty three million dollars. Of additional burden. Even with her, even with a ratio of. Um, I think you said eight to one, which is historically what. We've been able to get. At a federal and state, and I don't believe that money is going to be there in the future. But the other thing, so. So I don't see that as a solution because all we're doing. Is effectively saying, we're going to make. Housing for this group more affordable by making it less affordable for this group. Because we're going to give them a permanent burden of an additional three thousand dollars a year they're going to come up with. To, to um. Uh, Mr. Barton's comment, I completely agree with him. If we put. If we put for every thousand dollars of additional cost we put on a new house. We actually increase the, the market value of all the neighboring houses by a thousand dollars. It's just the simple, the met, simple math of replacement value. So if it costs you a hundred thousand dollars to build something and then you put ten thousand dollars. Of fees on top of it, the hundred thousand dollar house next door has now gone up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars in market value. And then finally, if you go to the, the, the top, the, the north west corner. Where, where, where you want to take that land out of the UGA. A good chunk of that land belongs to the Lummy. And what is, what has been? The consultation with them and what's their? Feedback about having their land taken out of the UGA? Oh, I see, yeah, but we. That's a question, Chris.
Wait, uh, are you, okay, sorry. It's, uh, I can respond to each of those questions if you like. Is that?
Yeah, let's start with the last one first. I mean, what, what did the Lummy say about taking their land out of the UGA?
Yeah, we have not heard from um, we've, we've again uh, reached out, but have not heard. From uh, many of the property owners out there. We have heard from DNR. Um, which is one of the owners and the port has been involved in this process as well and um. We have not heard them uh, object. Uh. Albeit, you know, most of the port's land that is in that area is there because it's in an aviation clearance area. Um, it's, it's not land that is. Part of a, a development proposal in their master plan, but we have not, we have not heard from the, the Lemmy tribe related to that property. Um. But part of the reason why uh, we're wanting to put it into reserve instead of removing it from the UGA like we are with the, the Lake Wacom watershed areas. Is that we do acknowledge that at some point it, it may be appropriate to be developed. Um, we just know that with it being essentially a mile from the existing city limits and with the airport in between. It's highly unlikely that we will be annexing that in the next twenty years. Um, which is why that, that and the, the highly impacted nature of the property out there as far as environmental constraints go. Were the, the, the two main reasons why we felt it was not appropriate to leave it in the UGA. Um. I think going backwards into your questions, the um. Again, with the impact fees, uh, I, I guess the argument that we would make is the true cost of that hundred thousand dollar home really is a hundred and ten. Because the necessary infrastructure that goes to support that house is part of the cost of the house. Um, and that's. That's just the way that, that cities work. You can't build the house and not have the roads. Water, sewer utilities and parks and trails and other urban services to service it. Um. There's just, the, the, the money has to come from somewhere and, and it's the up to the, up to the city to figure that out. So. Um. The impact fee paradigm is, is what we've decided will, um, you know, and it doesn't. Begin to cover all of those costs. It gets a, it gets things started. Um. And, and then there are maintenance costs and other things in, that are covered by things like taxes and other, other, other uh, buckets of money. So. Um. I think I, I, I don't know. Was there anything else I had, I didn't cover?
I, you know, I've indicated, I'm not going to support this because. Of, of the, the solution to the affordable housing thing. At the moment is to put a hundred and thirty three million dollars. Per year burden upon the rest of the community to fund it. So.
I, I, again, I would say, um, I don't think we pretend to view that as the solution because we don't think that will ever happen. But if you wanted to put a number to the gap in resources, that's what that represents. I think our solution. Um, that we're adopting in this plan is to make some very significant land use changes. To continue to um, really challenge ourselves with things like more intense transit oriented development options. To really lean into middle housing and try to make it as streamlined and easy as possible for people to get those units built, which will lower the cost to some degree. Um, and make those. Important investments with our, you know, amazing nonprofit partners to continue to build, you know, not six thousand, but maybe seventeen hundred. Affordable housing units that the city will be able to support. Um, so doing it within our means. Um, but yeah, we don't pretend, um, I, I. I, I would really hesitate to call that hundred and thirty million dollar solution because there's no way that that would. Financially work for our community at this point, but it does, it does paint a picture of the, the magnitude of the problem.
And first, thank you. And I think Commissioner Hanson is wanting to call for a point of order.
Uh. Or a question order is. How does the city of Bellingham's? Budget in regard to housing and solution to housing problems? Directly impact? What we need to decide about whether their UGA should expand and contract? I get the point. I don't even believe in all these statistics and projections or whatever, but I want to get down to. Where do you want to see the city expand and where do we not want to see it expand? Not. Bunch of pines, pine sky projections.
Commissioner Brown.
Well, I think that, I think the whole exercise of the comprehensive plan. Includes the demonstration of the cities. That they are meeting the requirements to, to provide housing with all the different population segments. And my concern is that all the cities are saying, oh, well, for the low population, we're just going to do this. And I don't believe this is even vaguely possible.
I don't either. That's what I said, just smoke.
So that's sad on UGAs. So and, and. You know, again, Chris, you didn't make the rules and I'm not blaming you, but the point is. But, you know, it is so expensive to build in Bellingham. And frankly, most of the rest of Washington and other jurisdictions in the country have found ways to get, bring that cost down. We have to fundamentally shift the cost model down. So the next generation, my, my kids are in their thirties, could afford to buy their own house. And their friends could, and they can't. They won't. They won't. I don't believe they will. Yeah. Sorry, I'm a bit wanned up tonight because I'm just. Just fed up with the, I'm just fed up with. The constant trend of housing becoming less and less affordable for the next generation. And the, by the way, the people who benefit is our generation because our housing prices are going up. Our home equity is going up. So. I'm in a pissy mood tonight, Congressman.
It's the rain, bro.
We, we don't disagree with you. I would say that. We don't disagree with you. Um.
Commissioner Van Deelen, go ahead and then, and then Commissioner Hanson.
I'm getting all these different, you, you know, I, I agree all the way around with Rudd, with Jim, with. City of Bellingham with. But we will, this same exact problem that we're discussing on Bellingham will impact every single. City that we've got to discuss. And at some point, we've got to move this stuff on. And I, I know I kind of mentioned that last week's meeting, but. Exactly. Jim says smoke. Jim or, you know, Rudd talks about. These costs that are just skyrocketing and, and uh, I remember when sewer and water hookups were five hundred dollars each and, and thinking that was just exorbitant. Thinking that was, nothing could ever get more than that. That's just my thought. We got to move these cities on. We just gotta, we gotta. Somehow move this stuff on. That, that's my point.
Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to move and amend to remove the South U. UGA. Reserve from the UGA reserves. Based on comments from the residents, the people for. Lake Patton, uh, Dave Roberts, who's retired DNR, very eminent. A scientist. I think that we should just forget about more. Uh, more growth in the Lake Patton watershed. So I'd like to move that, remove that South U UT.
Remove that South U U T from the reserve U G R, U G A.
What motion do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, what happens to the other motion?
Uh, well, this is a motion.
This amendment to the main motion, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Brown.
I I will speak against this, because until we've solved the housing issue, I don't wanna remove anything from U G A reserve or U G A. I haven't, I I just, I'll just tell you, I'm gonna push back and say. Until we find a way to make this stuff more affordable, so we start driving across. The other direction, I think we have to keep pushing back to the cities and say, no, go back to the drawing board. Because it's not, it's not a solution.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
If if I could just, uh, sorry, I mean, um, I I would. I would just remind, uh, the, and then we covered it in our presentation on the twenty-fifth, but one of the. Thoughts about the South U Street U G A Reserve, uh, why Bellingham recommended leaving it in reserve status was that, uh. When we do get the resources to work on infrastructure, mainly roads and a reservoir. That would serve that area, those infrastructure elements will also serve the North Reserve or the North U G A. Uh, for U Street and also the adjacent areas, uh, inside the city limits in the Samish neighborhood, so it. That area to some extent will help activate development. Uh, to in the area to the north and the west, so that was part of our reason, even though there's not a lot of development capacity in that south area itself. Uh, a road and a reservoir, um, located in that area. Um, could activate adjacent capacity, so that was part of our thinking there.
Commissioner Dan.
Yeah, I'll speak against the motion as well, and I think U Street is is definitely needed to come in, um, it's, oh. Basically part of the U G already, um, there's a school right there, uh, fire and these are already serving it. Um, and it's just a logical connection, so I'll all, uh, vote against the, against the motion.
Any other comments on motion? I mean, would you call the roll, please, on the motion to, um.
So the amended motion will vote first, it's to take out South U. Uh, out of the U G A reserve, is it just South U or is it?
Just to say South U.
So, okay. So the South U Street out of the U G A. And Commissioner Jefferson seconded.
Yes.
Go ahead, call the roll, please.
Brown.
Look.
Dunn.
No.
Hanson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Moser.
No.
Van Daylin.
No.
Barton.
Yeah.
The amendment fails.
Okay, so now we have our, uh, main motion. Is there any more discussion on the motion?
To move on to council.
Yeah, move it on to council. All right, I understand the motion. Would you call the roll, please?
Oh, yes.
So could we, uh, just a comment here, um, so yeah, this is a kind of a preliminary recommendation, then this will come back to you. The whole comp plan for a final public hearing and a final recommendation to council. So this is kind of a preliminary step in that, and then we'll put that in the, the chapter two in this case, and then I'll come back to you for a final.
Yeah, now, what would be our appropriate?
I, uh, you know, maybe, uh, we reckon preliminarily recommend approval of the, um. Of the Bellingham U G A proposal, something like that, it's just a signal to the planning department that this is, you know, what you want in the. In the, uh, comp plan, the draft comp plan that comes to you for the final hearing.
Um, hold on just a second, back up about the first sentence, what should we, what should the motion be preliminary recommend to move it on to council? I think that's what he's. I I just, so Eileen's gonna write down what the motion is, and she can't write everything.
I I think just. Recommend preliminary approval of the Bellingham U G A proposal.
Okay. So the motion, uh, will be amended to recommending approval.
I would, I would put preliminary in there, because you haven't made your final recommendation, yeah.
Preliminary approval.
Yeah.
Right, is there any discussion? Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Dunn.
Yes.
Brown.
Look.
Hanson.
Epstein.
Jefferson.
No.
Moser.
No.
Van Daylin.
Yes.
Barton.
No.
Fails.
Just keep beating that bill of orders.
Let's move on to the next one, then, Ferndale. And so.
We have Michael, um, from the City of Ferndale.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Mike Serbone, I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Ferndale. Uh, our proposal is the same, um, that was presented to you. October, maybe, but yes, that nine fifteen date that Dan identified, um, sounds about right. We are not proposing to change the urban growth area, uh. And I can answer questions, I can chat with you about impact fees and connection fees. Um, if you ever wanna put together a panel at a later date to talk about impact fees and connection fees, I'd be more than happy to. Participate and advocate for them.
Commissioner Moser has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there is, there is one change, though, because you you're taking out some of the U G A reserve, correct?
No. So, so, so the change might be from what was in the E I S. In the E I S, we showed additional urban growth area reserve. And that was a decision that the cities made, along with the county, I believe, to punt that to next year. So we could have a more thoughtful conversation about how and where that U G A reserve is located. Uh, but what's in front of you this evening is, I believe, the exact same map that was in the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. Uh, and Ferndale has enough, uh, room within that urban growth area to accommodate our residential and employment needs. And if you remember, I was like right on the edge with those employment needs, right, like thirty-three additional jobs, I believe, is what it was, um. But we do have adequate space in there to accommodate our needs, along with a series of rezones within the city. Uh, and future zoning, um, identified in the U G A.
Like, are there any additional questions for me?
I'd make a motion to approve Ferndale's plan.
Pre- preliminary recommend.
I would second. Jim, you got it?
Oh, no, you got there first. Okay, is there any, um, discussion, questions or comments?
We just bring up the map.
Very good. Yeah.
I I gotta get it, just, just a sec here, let's see.
He's got it on his tablet.
Wait, no, I'm trying to find it, oh, I was trying to find it.
Yeah.
Can you just bring the same map up you just had?
Yeah.
Sometimes a little Keebler elves in the computer fight against you.
I heard you.
This has the urban growth area reserves in them.
Doesn't have the two new ones they're proposing.
Oh, okay.
It keeps it as the same as twenty sixteen.
Yeah, we, we wanna have more time to talk to the different, um. The different, uh, entities that are concerned about those U G A reserves to hopefully, uh, all get to agreement on them.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
So Michael, I sent you that, um, analysis of of the soil types and some of the stuff. So I, I, I would just hope that. You know, I mean, I'm very much supportive of trying to preserve good farmland, by good farmland, I mean, it's got good soil. And if it needs drainage, it it has already been permitted for drainage. Because you can't put drain tile into land that, since nineteen eighty-five, you haven't been able to drain any new land, so. That's why I don't like the term good farmland of drained, because if it's not already drained. That's a word, right, so anyway, so my, my point is, is that to the degree that you look at. Urban growth area reserves based on the deeper level. In the U, in the N R C S database on, on the soil types, so if that makes sense.
You did, Commissioner, and I appreciated the email and the analysis and information in there, I will certainly be using that.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Any, uh, further questions or comments? I think when you call the roll, please.
Yes, Hanson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Moser.
Yes.
Van Daylin.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
passes.
Thank you.
Columbia Valley. Now.
Yes, uh, let me share my screen here. So again, for the record, my name is Matt Oment with, uh, Planning and Development. Um, so we, uh, submitted our urban growth area proposal for the Columbia Valley out in East County. In September and had a public hearing, planning commission had a public hearing on that. And kind of the basics of the proposal are shown here, there's no change to the urban growth area boundary, stays the same as twenty sixteen. There is a, an existing urban growth area reserve here. Uh, it's got steep slopes, a little, poluvial fans, you know, that type of thing, so. We are recommending taking that out of the U G A reserve and putting it into rural forestry comp plan designation. And rural forestry zoning, right now it's R ten A. Um, then we've got this general commercial zone here. Uh, which is existing, except that there's some split zone parcels, so we'd like to propose expanding that, just like five acres down to the south there. So that would be rezoned from urban residential four units per acre to general commercial. There's also an area north of Limestone Road. That's in the urban growth area, but currently zoned rural forestry, kind of like the Ag Zone in the, um, in the Linden or, uh. Nuxack or Sumas Urban Growth Area, this is rural forestry, though, but there was a policy put in the Subarea Plan. Um, and a a map was developed for that Subarea Plan that designated this for planned light impact industrial. But that has never been rezoned, so we're proposing to rezone that area from rural forestry to light impact industrial. Um, and then under House Bill twelve twenty. Um, where the state is saying, you know, rezone some of these, um. Single family's areas for, you know, to allow duplex, triplex, fourplex and or multifamily. Um, to provide, uh, housing potential for lower income or moderate income households, so. Here, uh, this is all urban residential four right now. And the county proposal, um, rezones this to U R M six, urban residential medium density, six units per acre. To allow some of those middle forms and those, uh, um, multifamily forms. Um. We did get a letter, the planning commission got a letter and made a motion, uh, to consider, um, looking at putting part of that U R M six. Over in this area, because the landowner, uh, would like to develop at a little bit higher density, so that proposal. Looks like this, landowner proposal, um, this would be about eighty acres, I think, um. And then, but they would remain U R M six on the west side of, uh, S R five forty-seven Kendall Road. And then this, the south half of that parcel would remain urban residential four, so it would not be rezoned. And instead, um, the, uh, rezone would occur on the east side of the, uh, the highway. So when you would have to cross the highway to get to this general commercial zone. Um, there is a East Wachem Regional Resource Center there, and then there's a vacant commercial land here that could be developed in the future. And there are a couple other components, like, uh, the Subarea Plan map. Um, would be amended to, um, match this G C zone, and then a policy relating to light impact industrial would be. Um, kind of tweaked to say that impacts would be addressed at the time of development, when you, when they're known, you know. What the use is and what type of impacts it would have, just as like it's commonly done throughout the county.
Commissioner Brown has a question for you.
So, if I understand it correctly, the. The land that you wanna go from your, your four to your M six on the west, on the east side. If I understand it correctly, that land, that landowner is further along in terms of entitlements and infrastructure. And wetlands still in the ocean, is that correct?
But I understand, and, um, I'm not in current planning, but either, uh, I don't know if Mr. Hovener wants to speak to where he's at in the process, I think. You know, he mentioned that in some of his letters and.
I mean, my, my point is, is if he is, to be at his hand, if he's more, if he's more, if he's further along. That process, then we're more likely to get more housing there sooner than we will on the east side, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, we'll hold on just a minute, and, uh, go ahead, uh, Jack, you got your hand up, go ahead.
Sure, uh, my name is Jack Hovenier, I'll just briefly comment on where we're at in the process. Uh, we have submitted wetland delineations for the entire, uh, eighty acres, as well as some other property, we've also done. Geology studies, we have, um, come to an agreement with Fire District fourteen for, uh, impact fees for the entire property. We have a developer extension agreement with Water District thirteen, uh, currently for fifty homes. We have done, um, road agreements, uh, road studies. Uh, and this is in no way meant to denigrate what the other side has done, what, when I asked the county. Uh, current planning, where that process was out, they had a, uh. What do they call it, T, T, T something, the acronym, it's, sorry, the acronym is eluding me right now, but they, they got a preliminary, uh. Preliminary meeting, I believe in two thousand one, uh, I think I sent copies of of that. And there was a number of things, uh, that would be next steps, and I, my understanding is they are interested in developing, but I think it's also fair to say that we are. Further along in that process at this time.
So, Jack, what year was that, the?
I wanna say it was twenty twenty-one, I I did send it in, Matt, in one of, in my, I I I hesitate to, uh, give inaccurate information. But I know what I sent in actually has the exact dates, exact information and so forth. A pre, it was a pre-op meeting, actually, yep, and I know that, uh. That happened, and I was told that, uh, because the, the time that had elapsed since then, the comments of that pre-op would would now be looked at again.
I think one of the commissioners has their hand up, and.
Uh, the option, I'm good. I'll make a motion that we, um, shift a portion of that U R M six. From the west side of the highway to the east side to mirror the map, the revised map.
Could I, could I agree and make a slightly different motion, worded slightly differently?
Sure.
Are you telling my language? So, uh, I'll, so, so second amendment, and here's a friendly, if you want, um, my motion would be to, and you can probably pull this up, um. Uh, if you have a, one of my motions sent in, uh, to approve the Columbia Valley Urban Growth Area Map on page four of the memo. From Matt Emmett dated October twenty seven, twenty twenty-five, entitled Read Twenty Twenty Five Compliment Update Columbia Valley U R M six modification.
Is this just making that, or is that, is it making that change and then preliminary approving the whole map?
Uh, it would be approving the change, we have a proposal for us, this is a change to that, to say, hey, this is our new proposal for us. And I think we can discuss that proposal and then approve it for later.
I'll, what do you think? I'll accept for a second years, that's why I pointed to you when I did this.
Okay, so this motion, just to clarify, this motion is on the whole map here, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, the new, what I call the new one, uh, in my numbers, I've dated this year proposal dated, uh, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
But you're, you're just making this the new book, the new map on the table, and then we'd have to vote to move that on, right? Or are you doing it all in one?
I'm, I'm doing it, uh, the first step, and then if we wanna, if, if this is good, or was happy with it, then we can discuss it, or then we can approve the whole thing.
And we have motion in a second. I need, did you get all the motion there, I think Commissioner Dundee has sent that out to you earlier.
So the Columbia Valley.
Yep, we got it.
From today, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just, I'm just trying to copy and paste so it can have it.
We'll hold twelve, I mean, we'll hold one. We'll hold twelve, I mean, we'll hold one.
So the friend, is it a friendly amendment, or is it an amendment to the original?
They are trying to replace the.
Okay. That is the new motion.
To approve the Columbia Valley Urban Growth Area Map on page four of the memo from Matt Emmett dated October twenty seven, titled. Complain Columbia Valley URM Six Modification.
Are you ready, Arnie?
Yes.
Would you call the role?
Yes. Jefferson.
No.
Moser.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm out of order, I apologize, Dunn.
Yes.
Hanson.
No.
Passes. Apologize, Chair.
I'd make a motion to preliminarily accept the Columbia Valley UGA. As currently has been amended.
Do you preliminary approve?
Yes.
If we have a motion in a second, we have any discussion? Commissioner Hanson.
Well, I'm opposed to any expansion of population in the Columbia Valley area. I think it's underserved our services, it has terrible transportation connections. I think we're talking about creating a rural ghetto out there. I don't, I don't think it needs to densify. I think other, and regardless of what the interjurisdictional task force came up with with their horse trading, I just think it's a. Overall bad place to put additional population, so I'm going to vote no on this whole thing.
Commissioner Brown.
You know, in normal circumstances, I'd probably agree with you. But this, this is where I. This is where I'd suggest this, this is the right thing to do for this reason. It's already there. Can't change it, it's already there, we, we already have an economic ghetto. One of the ways we perhaps can improve that is by improving the population base. The point where, for example, a supermarket can survive. Because there's not enough people out there to support a supermarket. There's not enough people out there to probably support other sort of. Yeah, businesses that would prevent a person from having to drive. Into Linden or into Bellingham, so. You know, A, we can't change the fact that it's already there. Maybe by increasing, by increasing the density, we can start to get. Get over that hump, but providing other services.
Commissioner Van Dalen.
They do have the Mount Baker Elementary School there, and they got the fire department right there as well, right on the. Right on that southern part of it, so. They got some things, they got a few things.
Is there any further discussion? I mean, would you call the role, please?
Yes, Hanson.
No.
Jefferson.
No.
Moser.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
Passes.
Um, good. Wes. Yes, go ahead. For, for, for Matt. You're still. You're hidden behind the little screen there, on the new proposal, I saw your housing needs were updated. So I got those numbers clocked, I didn't see. Any new roof capacity numbers or population growth allocation numbers, are those the same proposal dated September second?
The land capacity might change, we, in the last, I think it was a month ago or something, maybe a couple weeks ago, we got a letter from. The Department of Commerce. Because the city county planner group was kind of struggling. With the different numbers that came out from housing versus population, as Chris Behe described, because the housing numbers. Include homelessness and, you know, people who are cost burdened and things like that. So we wrote an email to Department of Commerce. Basically asking the question, if we meet the housing need, does that essentially in the state size also meet the population need? And they said, yes, it does, so we're really. Focusing on, you know, do we have adequate capacity for housing? And so that's really the kind of the key issue, because you're getting kind of two different answers, you know. Because one number is just future growth, the population, and one number, the housing. Includes future growth plus that accommodating people who are struggling with housing now.
Okay, that makes sense, I think just more specifically, in your proposal, are you changing your population growth allocation for Columbia Valley?
No.
Is you're still one one three seven? Yeah, and then are you changing your population group capacity of Columbia Valley?
Well, I, I guess that was kind of an outflow of our. Email from Commerce, we're, we're focusing the land capacity on housing, so. The state basically says, if you meet the capacity for housing, then you're automatically going to meet the capacity for population. So.
Yeah, I've, I've got, I've got a blank spot in my spreadsheet, I like to put a number in there. What is your, at this point, what is your population growth capacity for pros UGA of Columbia Valley?
Let me bring up my spreadsheet here.
One thousand six hundred and eighty.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
I think it's sixteen eighty-eight.
Yeah, he sent through a new, like an addition to that.
Okay.
Then he updated housing need, but didn't have any updated like growth capacity or population, so I'm just saying, it was the old one, that's great. Keep that same, yeah, I just want a number to put in the little.
Yeah, I think it's going to change a bit here. With the switching of around, okay, total, so of the revised proposal. Switching the URM six around. Got a total population capacity of one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six.
One seven eight six, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Lucas, are you ready to talk to us about chapter eight? Resource land.
Let's see, good evening, Commissioners, I am Lucas Clark. From Planning and Development Services, on October twenty-third, you held a public hearing on chapter eight resource lands. At that time, you made recommendations on the agricultural land subsection of chapter eight. Tonight, we are returning to it for a work session on the three remaining subsections of chapter eight. Forest resource lands, mineral resource lands, and marine resource lands. I can bring up. The chapter eight where you left off. Or I have a document here that is the combined. Motions that we were working from yesterday that includes Commissioner Dunn's. Proposed motions from this evening. And a new PDS motion on, a new PDS motion on eight A fifteen.
In missing a few, but.
Can you see my screen here?
Yes. Already been done, haven't they?
Yeah, we definitely skipped to, there's a new one.
Okay.
The ones we haven't done.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's right, keep going, there's, there's. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I wanted to keep the ones that we talked about.
Yeah, 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 got it.
Yeah, I, I think we've gone through some of them, we've booted, approved some, denied some, maybe we just start on the list here, kind of work from the top, does that sound okay?
Can I leave, you're explaining the order you have them in.
Yes, I kept. Everyone's motions from the prior meeting, just so it could be on the record, that nothing has changed. And I just added the ones on the bottom.
So, so are we at eight twenty-one, if, if I'm up to date on what I printed anyway?
Right.
Yes.
AP fifth. Yeah, eight twenty-one, yeah.
I got, I go to eight twenty-one. Eight six, eight fifteen, eight sixteen, and then eight twenty-one.
Yes.
So that's up on the screen now, right, or do we have the?
Yeah, she's highlighted it.
So, just to explain that, when we're talking about conservation of forest resources. It's. We're also within our purview to encourage restoration of previously forested land back into forestry land that wouldn't. Be, would be less appropriate for other uses, but would be great for forestry, so. I wanted to, in that clause. After restoration is, after conservation, insert and restoration. That is congruent with the recommendations of the. Forest Resilience Task Force and the Forest Advisory Committee, to my knowledge.
Where, where is this?
AP, page eight dash twenty-one. Yeah, eight dash twenty-one. Purpose, purpose. Thank you.
Hard to track everything, I needed more, I didn't bring enough tablets. This is just a purpose statement for the women, so it's not, it's not policy language, it's just narrative.
I'll second. Oh, yeah, I think, I think a lot of the, the discussion in the policies is about both. Using timberland conserving and then also like restoring it, so, you know, use again, I guess, I'd support the motion.
Any further discussion? I mean, would you call the role, please?
Yes.
As an impression. Jim, and I. I would argue that the best thing you can do from a restoration perspective is to provide. Some way to make it economical, take land that wasn't properly replanted and replanted, which means. You have to harvest the species that you don't want and then replant them with the species you do want. And the problem is, I'm not quite sure how to do that economically, because. What I've been told, if you have more than. I think it's more than fifteen percent. Non-colonizers, it's now not economical. Well, I used to be in forestry and part of my career, and at one point, maybe I, I'm obsolete. Alder was going for a thousand dollars per board, per board, per hundred board feet, or. Anyway, it was, it was cedar, so cottonwood ain't worth nothing, but alder is valuable. So you can do a process where you can get some value out while you, to help. Fund the restoration and then hopefully you become productive forest lands for industry and for the environment at the same time. Certainly. You probably got a lot more experience on forestry than I do. Given I have none, that's another high bar.
Is there any more discussions? I need what you call the role, please.
Yes. Moser.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
Passes.
Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
Now, I was. I was looking at a couple of different ways to look at refor, rezoning forestry, rural forestry to commercial, which I didn't get a second. I was presented with a couple of options, one was. To reserve, rezone rural forestry greater than twenty acres, another one. Rezone greater than. Than forty acres, forty acres or greater, not connected to a water system. But resources in the, in the mail-in, you should have gotten this afternoon proposed. A, taking a look at the most functional way to differentiate between. Different areas of rural forestry to consider which ones might be most productively rezoned to commercial forestry. And I think it might be prudent to, to move that approach. You guys have that somewhere? Email from Kaya, there is.
And just a clarifying question there, in this, it looks like there's one motion, one entry with two motions maybe. You've got one about resuming rural forestry, and then right below it, one about reducing wildfires, are those two separate motions?
Well, those are definitely different.
Definitely, no, exactly, two motion, okay, so, and so just so I'm clear, so your motion is for. Eight G dash eighteen. That policy?
Yeah, and it says suggested change policy eight G eighteen to read, and you have, you have.
It's right there.
Okay.
Resizing rural forestry lands to commercial forestry.
No, 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 the resources one that came in this afternoon.
That one, we did not add the.
That says, yeah, amend to read. County staff should review the existing rural forestry designated land to identify any areas. Where rezoning commercial forestry is appropriate. And aligned with the comp plan goals. Of protecting forest land can. Prevent a. Protecting forest land conversion, encouraging growth in areas already supplied with. Infrastructure and services and reducing burden on rural emergency response services. In the wildlife urban interface, including wildfire and other natural hazards. I think, I think I would say protecting forest land from conversion. I think that's a typo, and that's what I'd like to move, and you should have it, you have it somewhere on one of your screens. I have it on.
Yes, I can bring it up.
Yeah. But where, where would you put that? It would just be eight G eighteen, and it's only seventeen and eight G, I think. Oh, I guess we changed it.
I think eight G had a bunch of bullet points in it, we do put it like the.
That's where we need more screens, so we can look at everything at once, because I can't look at eight. Would add it as the ninth bullet to that eight G eighteen. Okay. One nice bullet, okay. So maybe. Maybe we could go to that. That email, it's an excellent attachment to the email.
Yeah, we can, just a moment here.
Oh, you got it, Lucas.
I'm trying to get it. If you give me one more minute, I'll be able to pull it up.
Ideally.
Lucas, we can get it here.
I believe we can keep four different windows on that screen, and there's a bunch of things at once.
Okay.
There it is.
There you go.
No.
Right. And, and so you should say protecting forest land from conversion. Is, is, is a motion I would make.
Good, so could you restate your motion?
Well, I would, I would move that we. We insert the bullet, a bullet. To eight G dash eighteen to read as on the screen there, except. Adding from before conversion.
Do we have a second on this motion yet?
There is not one, yeah.
Okay, I second.
Commissioner Dunn. I, I'm, I'm kind of hard pass on converting rural forestry to commercial forestry, I think with. We've heard from DNR that they use the value of that land to support schools and to be able to make transfers and. To do a lot of different stuff that kind of impact them, and their ability to raise funds. I also think folks who live on rural forestry land kind of enjoy that lifestyle, it's a little bit different. And to tell them like, well, no, now you've got to change everything there, and you can't, now it's only straight commercial, I don't think that's the right thing to go, so I'd probably go against that.
Commissioner Maser.
Yeah, I think it's a mistake to reason any of the rural forestry to commercial, the rural forestry plays a pretty. Important role in forestry in my mind, because the small forest landowners are willing to. Be a little bit more creative in how they manage their, their forest resources, so you get. Bigger biodiversity than you do on the commercial lands, you get. Different. Age diversity in the stands. They'll look at non-timber forest products, they'll look at, you know, habitat and recreation. So I think that they actually. They actually are beneficial on the forestry side and the environment side. So I, I really don't, I think it's a valuable resource to have that, so that, you know, you, I think you'll lose. You'll lose people in the commercial side that are willing to do what's happening on that, they're also the biggest contributing contributor of alder into the market. You'll lose people in the commercial side that are willing to do what's happening on that, they're also the biggest contributing contributor of alder into the market. Because they're not necessarily replanted, you know, they're not sprayed and replanted in the same way, and so, um, they're, they are a valuable. Own it to the current market.
You know, I agree with all these things that are being said in terms of forest practices, and I think it's admirable, uh, I may have misunderstood. Because my understanding would be that, uh, a small. These people have become small commercial land forest owners, and they could manage their forest any way they wanted to. And that, the, the intent of my motion was to help slow down con- conversion. Because the people already live there, that's fine, they, they can live there on their forty acres or what have you, but it would limit. Someone who owns forty acres putting a residence, if there isn't a residence already there, that was, that was the intent of what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, and I think if there's already a house there, someone's living there, I don't think that they'll move off of it because it gets rezoned, girl, but. The ones that don't already have a house, that somebody might put a house there and then manage it in that way. Since they can't, it'll probably get bought up by a commercial firm, right, because. It, it, these things don't necessarily pencil for them in the same way, but since they're living there, they're managing it over time, they're able to do it. In those, those ways, I, I don't, somebody might do it, but I don't know if someone's gonna drive out of town, i- i- its likelihood is somebody who's living there. I, I think the value of the land to a commercial forester would, i- it's a good chance they will acquire it.
Bruce or Van Daylen?
Ironically, I just was talking with a landowner neighbor who has a large, pretty large chunk of land. And, and no house on it, on any of it, and he's talking about donating it. Through the Conservation District or that process to the county, turning it over, you know, and, 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 and it's, it's all second growth. But there's some beautiful big trees, there's a lot of ugly alders and, and stuff too, but it is a. You know, they do think that way, folks do think that way, just kind of a thought. And he's thinking about it as, as, as they're, they're aging, and they live out of the county, and, you know, and we were just talking, what, what's the plans for it? And that was his, their thoughts, you know. Good thoughts.
Oh, I, I, I think there's some excellent stuff coming up here, it's awesome, I just wonder if you could, uh, recognize K- Kaya Hayes. Who has crafted this motion, because she'd like to clarify.
Yeah.
In this, in the regard to these comments that they made.
Yes, uh, Kaya, please, um, I see, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, um, I really appreciate the discussion, um, I think. A- and the opportunity to clarify, because, uh, everything that folks have said, um, is very much in line with the intent. Of, uh, this suggested edit, um. Our intent was to respond to some of the initial proposals that were more broad brush, exploring conversion of rural forestry zone. Um, to underline the importance of that zone for a lot of the reasons that were highlighted by Commissioner Mosari and others, um. It was partly in response to some of the conversation at the Forest Advisory Committee last night, uh, where folks recognized that they. Didn't support a broad brush conversion, uh, but that there, if there was interest, um, you know, within the county. Planning realm in exploring whether or not there were areas of particularly high risk, um, you know, for wildfire or other natural hazards. That may be a more strategic and precise approach to rezoning would. Achieve that outcome without some of the unintended impacts on all of the other aspects of rural forestry, you know, that we have identified are valuable, so. Really, I, what, what we were trying to get at is, um, that if this is a policy to be explored, or if the county. And the comp plan has a goal of, um, discouraging, um, higher density and land conversion and development. Within the wildland urban interface because of the burden that it places on rural emergency response, um. That this felt more appropriate as a more in-depth conversation, separate from the comp plan, um, yeah, thank you.
Richard Dunn, um, Kaya, this is Dan, did you say that you met with the Forestry Advisory Council? And this is where that recommendation came from?
So I attended the Forest Advisory Council meeting, um, and they reviewed, um. The current chapter draft to see how their feedback was incorporated, um, and what they highlighted is what Holly Coon mentioned earlier in the meeting. During public comment is that they don't support the policy language as it's written, which suggests a, a kind of a blanket rezone. From rural forestry to commercial forestry, and, um, my response is distinct from that in that. I heard one of the council member or committee members acknowledged that there is potentially. Value in looking at some of these areas to see if there are many overlapping, you know, risk factors or. Reasons why smaller and more strategically selected areas could have value in being converted, um, but that it didn't feel appropriate. To take a broad brush, um, or to not engage, you know, committees like the Forestry Advisory Committee and. A little bit more broader stakeholder feedback, um, before making a decision like that.
All right, okay, if they sent in a, a letter and one of the requests was specifically to remove this kind of language, they said. Uh, remove the following language quote, this is what they want to remove, is consider rezoning properties in rural forestry to commercial forestry. So as to encourage commercial forestry and discourage residential growth forestry, so they're, they're asking us to like, not even consider that, um. So I guess, um, just make it clear, so Resources supports this language, it looks like the Forestry Advisory Committee does not.
I guess what I'm saying is we support exploring this topic in more depth, um, we. And we recognize the valid concerns that the F A C has related to this language as it's written in the comp plan. So we don't support a blanket, um, policy language that advocates for full conversion of all rural forestry. To commercial forestry, um.
And, and when you say we, you're speaking on behalf of Resources?
That's right.
Perfect.
Bruce Brown. Wait, when you say you're speaking on behalf of Resources. Has this been approved by the Board of Resources or who within Resources?
You mean the comments on chapter eight?
Wait, you just said that, you just said this is, this is supported by Resources. Who within Resources is supporting it, is this resulting with board resolution?
Uh, this is just a comment letter generated by staff members working on the comprehensive plan, uh, which includes myself as the land and water policy manager.
Okay, so, so more accurate statement is that this, these are your recommendations as opposed to. The Board of Resources, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Bruce from a third, is the motion on the table to amend a bullet or add a bullet?
To insert a bullet point, that's what Commissioner Hanson said. And Commissioner Jefferson, uh, seconded.
I think no further discussion, Irene, what color roll, please?
Yes, Van Daylen?
No.
Brown?
Stuck.
Dunn?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Mosari?
No.
Barton?
Abstained.
Motion fails. Brown, oh yeah, you said abstained.
I'm doing better now. My personal presence is, is if I don't feel that I have successfully persisted in my head to make a decision one way or the other. Then I'd be rather upset.
We ready for the next part, Commissioner?
Yeah, yep.
Lucas, can you bring it back with this?
See if you work out the fourth one.
Still say anything?
I'll tell you later, because I work here.
So you, this would be a new word.
The wildfires.
So do you want me to read this, or?
Richard, yeah, Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
Okay, uh, eight G dash twenty-one, reduce the risk of more, this is an installation of more frequent wildfires. And this is coming from the, uh, Forest Resilience Task Force, um, and I did look at. Language from the Forest Advisory Committee as well, but. One, educate forest landowners on treatments that buffer forest lands and ecosystems from wildfires. Increasing vertical separation where possible, reducing fuels around homes and other structures along roads and standing edges. And managing repairing zones. Two, review county, county ordinances involving lot sizes and building setbacks. To ensure compliance with defensive space best practices and to ensure compliance. With the Firewise USA program. Ordinances should be updated where appropriate, and, uh. This, this is a public safety, this is a move for greater public safety, and also to protect the forest. And it's, uh, it's an incent, it's, I guess, and it's initiative towards personal responsibility. By landowners to lower dependency on the public to protect them from risk.
Richard Brown.
Is that your question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, move.
Yeah, um, just wondering how this would interact with the wooey requirements now. Um, you know, you, 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 uh, referenced Firewise, which is kind of guidance, really is actual like codes.
Mm-hmm.
Ask Jim. Yeah, can I, can I address that? Uh, number one in this proposal, we already knew, and the Conservation District actually has a grant, um. That they have been going around and talking to property owners voluntarily and advising them on. How to, how to reduce the fuels around your houses and, um, setbacks and things like that, um. When the wooey, the, the wooey, uh, is sort of in flux right now, right, D N R is. Uh, currently updating the wooey map, um, and that might be done this summer or fall, is my understanding, uh, but. Then it'll go through a certification adoption process, a public review process and comment and all of that. Once that's finally adopted, and if the wooey code through the State Building Code Council changes or it becomes consistent with that, that's the overall goal. Because when it was first proposed, they were wildly indifferent, and, um. So the idea is to get it, get it consistent for counties to understand and how to apply it, then the State Building Code Council would adopt the rule code. From a building code perspective, and that's how it would happen, so we would have to amend our ordinances. At some point, whenever that gets finalized, so, yeah, this is just really talking about the process, it's on the books.
I believe Commissioner Brown has a question for you.
So I'm familiar with woo-woo.
Wildland urban interface.
So my, I, I like this idea with one caveat, which is, at the moment. You have to have a ten-foot setback around a dwelling, correct?
It depends on.
Not five, but for other things, it's.
Yeah.
Right, so, do you have to, it's. The ten foots, the, the ten foot, you start getting into this issue about the ten-foot setback. And then critical areas and critical areas buffers, my, my concern is I think the setbacks, so this is probably thirty feet, is that right?
I, I don't know particulars of it, but I know that was our concern, was critical areas, we don't want people going in and mowing down. Uh, habitat, uh, good habitat, just because it's within thirty feet or fifty feet of your house, and so that was our concern. And comments back and why we opposed, and I say we, that's through the, um, county. Planting Directors Association and WAC, the Association of Counties, very strongly got back to D N R and said, this, this isn't workable right now, so.
So, so for an existing, you know, I, I accept it from an existing residents' perspective. The other side of that is if you have, let's say, a wetlands here and you have a hundred-foot buffer here. And you've got to have a ten-foot setback from that buffer, if you've now got to have a thirty-foot setback, now you're moving, you're making it even harder. Harder to build a dwelling because of all the, because the setbacks start on top of each other, so that's my concern as to whether. We're making it even harder to build houses, even in, yeah, in greater areas or. Um.
This, this one is kind of really focused on forest lands more than, uh, so it could affect forested wetlands. Um, where you're gonna have tree cover that are more likely to burn, right, than, than a boat to like a grass buffer or something like that, but. But the same, same issue is, is at play, we want to make sure that there's still buildable. Uh, buildable, building envelope when you get done.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. So that's why my support for this is sort of schizopranic.
Well, I'm not an expert on these, uh, practices, but, uh, practically speaking, there are fuel control. Mechanisms that are most effective, they don't include cutting down trees, this has to do with the nature. One, the underbrush, and especially taking care of fallen branches, I used to have a job going along the roads and taking. Falling branch, branches and slash and pi- piling them up into piles and then they'd be brood in the middle of the winter. So there, I mean, there are fuel control measures that aren't basically clear-cutting the area around your residents.
I'll also say there's building practices that, uh, can make a house more defensible, the siding material, the roofing material, the roof construction. And those are the things that like wooey dresses a lot, so.
The venting and.
Richard Dunn.
Oh yeah, I just speak in favor of the motion, um, I think it's about educating, um, to reduce harm, you know, how, how, how do you make it so your house doesn't burn down? Or you could better chance to survive, yeah, see, right, how you get a better chance to run that, that makes sense to me. Um, and yeah, the movie's been a little, uh, controversial, it came out the map, uh, a year, two years ago, and it's like, high risk, medium risk, low risk. And some of the highest place were like in Bellingham, and that was a kind of a, the Bellingham wants like, you know, have more trees, but it's like, well. How do you have more trees, but then also create defensible space and so is, but they're revising it, we'll see what happens later, but I think something like this where you're just kind of like. Yeah, there's ways to build your house so there's more survival, um, and we don't have a lot of forest fires here, but I'm trying to think ahead ten, twenty years in the future. And I don't know what's gonna happen, maybe, so it makes sense to at least educate people for their.
Thank you, and you have a comment? Irene, what do you call the role, please?
Yes, Jefferson?
Yes.
Mosari?
Yes.
Van Daylen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Passes?
What's our next one here?
Here's the next part here, I think, uh. Commissioner Hanson, you said to split these into two different motions, so I just put it in two different for you there.
Yeah, I'd prefer to have a comment and, and then we could just dispense with, just everybody knows there's a lot of citizen concern about. Gravel mining areas where they happen to live, and I don't have a petition, particular motion. About that, since we don't seem to be expanding, uh, the mineral resource areas or anything, so.
Can you hold this for a second, Irene, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Lucas, those two motions were together. As number one and number two in policy eight G twenty-one, so now we're on his general questions or general comments.
And.
I'm sorry, just as a point of, point of order there, I was understanding that your motion was, uh, one, which to educate forest landowners. Um, let me read, so that first paragraph is what the motion that I, that I was supporting, I'm reading the second paragraph, which is number two.
I thought it was five, yeah.
I had it, that's how I had it printed out, so that's how I was reading it.
Okay, is everybody else figure that those, the two parts that are separated by the line are actually the same?
Yeah, so everybody was looking at how I printed it, and they were both in the same little box.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, would have been my mistake then. All right.
Richard Hanson, correct me if I'm wrong, you were, you were speaking.
Yeah, I just, I just, just wanted to bring to our attention a lot of citizen input on rural residents. Adjacent to gravel mining areas that they have con- concerns, and I don't. I don't have a specific motion, but I guess I just wanted to highlight those concerns, and. I also thought it was interesting that they were logging where these, uh. Trucks full of gravel were going and so many of them are going to Canada. Uh, during the dates they were tracking them that next time they come in and say, if you don't approve gravel mining expansion. How are we going to build the roads in Waukegan County? I'll think I'll take that with a grain of salt, so. That was. Nothing dwell on.
And Commissioner Hanson, I'd like, I'd like for a fight of that because I did see the comments about gravel mining and. Um. About to hate to say this, but I was here in the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan. We had an extensive discussion about that. And one of the things that we were told. By the people that are supposed to be experts is that Waukegan County really doesn't do that much. But the ag people came in and they said they need gravel mining. Because you get farmland or ag land. That you get a bar built up and now the ag land is starting to flood.
Well, that's the next motion.
And, okay, and so that was, um, that was the comment at the time is that it doesn't happen very often. But they needed to be able to do that. And the preference is to mine it off of the gravel bars that would impact. Ag land if it's not removed. But go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, because that was my next motion.
Okay.
And, uh. Because of that, I crafted the motion so it would remove references next to motions to commercial harvest. Which I was on, I was on the River and Flood Advisory Committee for about eight years. And we had lots of presentations on that. And it turns out that. There's actually very little gravel that's commercially viable for harvest, once you take into account all the permitting costs and all the mitigations. And they were actually asking for a two hundred thousand dollar a year county subsidy to be able to move forward with commercial gravel bar scalping. So I don't really, I really believe that is not commercially viable and is environmentally destructive, but if, uh. If governmental, if the flooded, flood, flood people of the county have an instance where. They determine that it's necessary to remove gravel to. Uh, to mitigate or prevent flooding, there's nothing here that would permit this. It's just, it just. Excludes commercial gravel, gravel harvest from the, from the bars.
Yes, um. And that's, okay, I understand, and I understand what you're saying and, um. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, when, when folks do commercial gravel harvesting, do they go through a permit through the county?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe, because I don't really know a lot about.
In the state.
Okay, in the state, but you, wait, wait, you give me a background on.
Yeah, so, uh, in our shoreline, uh, management, uh, regulations. Um, gravel bar scalping is sometimes called is, uh, allowed as a conditional use. No one has ever applied.
I was gonna say, that, that's what I was.
To do that because they will never get approved. Yeah, because if we automatically, we probably automatically require EIS. Um, and then you'd have to get state, uh, any federal approval or permits, uh, to basically mine underwater. And the impacts on salmon habitat are the primary impediment or the challenge to do that. Uh, in an environmentally responsible way. So no one does it. Uh, because no one wants to take on risk or let cost. I mean, without certainly being. So, uh. Mr. Brown knows quite a bit about this and. Uh, I would ask Mr. Chair that any conversation that Mr. Brown contributes to this conversation, he limited to three minutes.
What about the houses on the bars?
Uh, there have been examples, deeper, Mr. Brown will tell you in three minutes or less. In Oregon where this has been, uh, deemed to be, you know, could be done in a, in a. Uh, environmentally, um, friendly way, but. I would just tell you, nobody takes on that risk. No, no private, uh, operator will take on that risk. I've never done.
I mean, um, Commissioner Brown would like to speak, would you, Mr. Chairman?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Pisanias for using some of his time to explain. Now, I, I actually don't agree with this gravel bar, gravel bar scalping.
Right.
And the, the, the general, as I understand it, you've got to stick at least ten feet away. From water because you can have, uh, smell, um. You can have the. The small thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In, in buried inside the gravel, it's still hydrolically connected. No, what I was proposing. Was, was two things on the issue. Mineral resource lands. One was that the uplands that have been created by a drive to hit meander zones. That are well set back from the river. Be mined because they will eventually at some point, you could have a hundred feet back from the river. They would eventually be recruited as, because the river meanders around. And by, by. Digging up the gravel there. You're taking gravel that is, is going to create additional water storage for the flood river. When the, when, when, when we have flood events. If you take, if you do it the right way, you create areas where the river over tops drops into that area. And then slowly drains out afterwards. And that's what they do in, down in Oregon that, that I was interested in.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't, wasn't the.
In the channel.
It wasn't in the channel, it wasn't in the channel at all. It was in, in dry areas that are well above the, the normal high watermark, right? So that was that. And then the other side of it is. The one thing that we did get in discussion with a lot was. Expanding, people wanted to be able to do gravel mining on areas as small as five acres. When you, when you look at the angle of repose. You know, the land, the way land sits, if you, if you might gravel mine a five acre parcel with the appropriate buffers. You get virtually no, no area of gravel, cubic area of gravel, the amount of surface area that's been.
Right.
So you really want to take an existing gravel mine and expand it as much as possible. Horizontally and vertically, but. And I did that last three minutes.
Thank you.
So basically from all this discussion, the, uh. The, the, uh, verbiage in there. Speaking about commercial gravel harvest is like an appendix, you know, that. It's not like it's going to burst on us, but it seems like nonsense to leave it in there. So that's why we wanted to move it.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I think it's pre-decision. I'd just say, if someone wants to make motion, great. If not, we should.
Oh, yeah, I didn't make a motion, yeah.
Oh, you want to repeat motion?
Read it, okay. So eight dash thirty-seven. Uh, riverine areas, we pay, replace the first two paragraph with. Uh, just part of order, there is not eight dash thirty-seven, I guess. Eight something dash.
Oh, this is page.
Page, eight, 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 dash thirty-seven.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry. Uh, it's, it's a. It's a heading of a paragraph, introductory, introductory paragraph. To replace the first two paragraphs with. Gravel harvest from riverine areas for commercial use is neither cost-effective nor ecologic. Is neither a cost-effective nor ecologically sound practice. It can produce conditions that will encourage. Channel instability, increased flooding. And damage to infrastructure and shall not be allowed. That, that was my. First motion.
It truly be a second motion?
No, I don't think so.
There's no second, yeah.
I will.
So it's on, on the screen.
I'm paying attention.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, so they just kind of follow up questions, Mark. So there's, I know there's all kinds of different mining. Is this section specifically about mining in? Or within a river channel?
Yes.
Okay, so, and you're saying that that type of mining, as far as you know, has not happened, has not been permitted to happen? From a commercial standpoint?
Right, Andy.
I've not seen them.
Yeah, it's okay. Does anybody do it on a, like, for flood control or for other, other things?
The river blood is discussing that as an option for flood control measure.
Here. And that's a subsequent paragraph.
Yeah, that's a, that's a conceptual idea.
It's all like every year they're out there digging stuff up.
No. My understanding is they did gravel scalping in, you know, pre-nineties, nineties and before, right? Back in the day.
Commissioner Brown.
Well, my understanding is. Back in the day, they would do it right on the river's edge.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And the, the thing I don't like about this is, is the riverine areas because that to me would include. Could include an area that's several hundred feet back from the river or several, you know. Several dozen feet above the river, that's an old meander channel. So I, I would. I only propose. Something like gravel harvest from within nine hundred feet of the high watermark.
Commissioner.
Yeah, it also seems like this is a, a policy that's in a heading. So I'm wondering if, if it's going to actually say what is or isn't allowed or where it's allowed. It should land in a policy somewhere rather than be the very first paragraph in the whole section.
Like, like goal EQ?
A goal or a policy, it seems like, sounds specific, kidding.
Yeah, I feel like the, what the part we're talking about here is basically just like a preamble or introduction, like, hey, here's, we're interested in the idea. And then if you scroll down a little bit, the, the, um, goal and policy. Down the next page, I don't know who's controlling the screen. Um, so this is, this is where the kind of the, the rubber hits the road. Um, and I guess I'd look at this, I would say, you know, if this is stuff that we're saying or policy, like, oh, here's a way to do this thing. But it's a thing we've never done and most likely that we would ever do, that I think that this is the place where we'd look at this and say, is this the right goal? Are these the right policies to have for a thing that, that nobody will most likely ever do? The preamble is sort of like, it's not really policy, there's really, I mean, you say it kind of whatever you want up there, but that's, that's the part where, so Jim, would you? Have, do you have any, any motions for the actual policy goals?
Uh, yeah, I do, I do have, I do have one and it seems like. The rhetoric I would be replacing is certainly not objectionable, so it's, doesn't seem like it's a big deal either way. You know, other than kind of open, it creates an impression that gravel mining might be a functional process. That gravel bar mining might be a functional process, but it. Uh, yeah, I'm not attached to wording one way or the other. Or think about it.
Good luck, Brown.
I think where you and I would have an agreement, Jim, is there shouldn't be gravel mining within. The, the normal riparian buffer.
For the active channel or the channel migration zone, and there'd probably be some technical.
Terminal, the, the tunnel migrations, I don't know, could be something from a thousand years ago that's five hundred feet away.
Well, it's, according to the GIS work that the county does, the channel migration zone is. Where it was likely to move in the next hundred years or something to that effect, right, Mark?
If the levees were removed.
Right, yeah. When the levees are removed.
Go back to the natural, yeah.
Well.
But in that case, then the Nookseck might, once we bulldoze, they'll go north back to Canada again.
Back through Bellingham. Yeah, through Bellingham, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and just, just to, just quickly to finish up on this. The Nookseck River is one of the most productive rivers on the West Coast for sediment. So this is not an issue that most jurisdictions deal with. Because the Nookseck River produces upwards of a hundred million cubic yards a year of sediment. It's a massive amount of sediment. I mean, volcanic activity of Baker, I mean, it's, it's, it's taking the glacial deposits off the side of. The mountains and moving them into the ocean.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, because of all these levees. Set, uh, fine, fine sediment, silt that should be going onto farmlands is washing out into the delta, so you can practically. Walk from there, you headed downtown now.
Um. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, yeah, just in terms of like, the thing we're talking about here, um. Google tells me, uh, riverine area, for the regions adjacent to rivers and lakes influenced by the hydrological dynamics. Included flutable, flutable zones provide cultural and social benefits that are, so it sounds like the, the word riverine area. Might have different definitions, but here, that's pretty broad. So I think, right, it kind of includes like the flood plain or whatever. So like you're saying, maybe there's areas that are outside the river channel that we can mine, five hundred feet away, that are still in the riverine area. I think, Jim, you're saying the stuff that's in the river, like right here where the water goes, we shouldn't mine that stuff.
Yes, and, and, but in the broader sense, since I came from a career in, in habitat restoration. It would be appropriate if the river were unleashed to have its natural migratory, uh. Processes restored. And they, and they would be continually creating habitat. And some of that gravel that's maybe a couple hundred yards away would then become part of the river and then be used by. Salmon in the future when the river moves over there. And I know that this isn't probably too realistic under current, current socio-political conditions. So I'm not really. Like I said, that attached to this motion that we should talk it in the ground. You know, so.
Go ahead.
Um, Mark, do people mine gravel in other areas of the county that are outside the river channel? Like, is that a, like? In the flood plain or?
Oh, yeah, all the, all our mineral resource lands, uh, the gray areas on this map are.
Full of flood plain. Okay, so what, I think it sounds like we're saying is like mining water from in where the water is, like that's. Mine, mine gravel where the water, that's pretty bad, and you know, nobody ever does that, but. Mile away, mining gravel, because we need to use gravel for destruction or whatever, is pretty common.
Yeah.
Occurs, so, okay, so I want to, I guess with the motion, um, I want to make sure that what we're talking about is. Mining gravel inside the river channel and we're all saying that's a bad idea. Is that what we're saying?
Well, you could change riverine area to river channels.
River channel.
River and stream channel, I guess.
Harvest from, so what if you said gravel harvest from rivers? From rivers?
I like that, I can support it, no, sorry, I didn't just.
Scott, you can go first.
Okay, I could support the river channel part, you know, I can support that. Versus, be, because the major, vast majority of the farmland is. Part of the flood plain. If the, if the dykes were gone, all those berries are all underwater, so.
Yeah, I'm not taking, this is an emotion or boot the day.
No, 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 I get that, but I'm just saying that's why I would support the river channel shortage.
The goal on, on the next page on goal eight Q is really specific to. Extraction of gravel from river bars and stream channels.
Gravel from river bars, stream channel, yeah.
You know, for flood control and commercial purposes.
Sure.
So.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd just say, seems like we're spending a lot of time talking about this.
Yeah.
And it has no functional effect on what's actually happening. Uh, on mining around the river, and it seems like it might have unintended consequences for other areas that would be suitable. Um, so I, I just. Don't think it's a good idea, and it seems like we're spending a lot of.
Less than three minutes. What, what is the, uh, the buffer for a river? Critical habitat.
You know.
Three hundred or three hundred?
It's a hundred, three fifty or three?
Three hundred.
It's a hundred and fifty.
Is it only a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe resolve, resolve this, probably mineral gravel harvest. Within a hundred and fifty feet of the high water mark.
The thing, yeah, I think it's tricky though is if there's wellings associated with the shoreline, then that shoreline buffer extends out. There are areas where. The shoreline management zone is wider than the active channel.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. Well, there, there's a wetland source.
Right. Definitely hard to see that.
But, see. So. Wonder if you'd accept that as a friendly minimum in this, the gravel har- harvest from within a hundred and fifty feet of a high water mark. It's commercial, right, except. Commercial.
Okay. Julie, you accept that?
I do.
So, I mean, how much of that is promoted motion there?
I just changed the gravel harvest from within a hundred feet from the high watermark for commercial. Hundred fifty feet.
Yep.
The high watermark for commercial use, so just that. Changing riverine areas, taking that out. Gravel harvest from, and then just within a hundred fifty feet. From the high watermark.
Or near the high watermark.
Yep.
Am I doing anything else?
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
The more we take, the more we take gravel. From these deposits, the less farmland we have to convert. The mineral resource lands. So, the more we can. The more we can mine from the slopes of Mount Baker, so to speak. The less, the less. Production from the slopes of Mount Baker, the less farmland we have to convert. Production from slopes of that, but the less farmland we have to convert the gravel lot.
Any other comment? I mean, what do you call the role, please?
Yes, oh, sorry.
No.
Ben Dillon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Barton?
No.
Passes.
Uh pardon, Commission, can, I mean, can you just confirm that I have that correct as well?
Yes. It's correct.
Thank you.
And now I have one that's really has to do with the policies, it's the next one.
I mean, you move um Lucas's video just so you can see the, oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Okay, so this one is actually on page eight thirty-eight, they kept the page numbers the same, which is wonderful. And it's it's under, it's the heading, it's actual eight Q. This aesthetic, the heading of eight Q. And there's an edit here that's being being added. It says. And. Okay. First, there's there's two of them, oops, there's three of them here, okay. After flood control. Add by appropriate government agencies, and we're talking about. About to removing gravel for flood control, but I don't want to get the idea out there that the guy owns the property. Has a leeway to go out and start removing, doing their own flood control projects. And and so it was, so after flood control on the A, it would say um. It would say by appropriate governmental agencies. That's if that's for the goal itself. I'm sorry, if I got make, this is, this is messed up on its where it lies. If anybody else find that?
So you're just adding by appropriate government agency.
Yeah, or. Fire control as being a reason to do it.
Jim. Would it look better if it came after purposes?
Whichever way looks better.
Or flood control purposes by appropriate governmental agencies.
Sure.
Control purposes by appropriate.
Well, flood control, flood control purposes, same thing, right? But the way it reads now is for flood control by appropriate government agencies purposes, oh, yeah, that purpose is unnecessary. Sorry.
And then, and don't ex, okay, that's. This this is all kind of fills together, and the second was, don't accept the change in commercial purposes, which someone else is proposing.
Okay. So, and then in your motion.
Get rid of commercial purposes.
Yeah, you recommended taking that out.
Right, so that's how it fits together. That's why the purpose is, okay, there we go.
So can I can I read this for for the commission? Subject to federal and state regulations, support extraction of gravel from river bars and stream channels for flood control purposes by appropriate government agencies. Where adverse hy- hydrologic and other environmental impacts are avoided or minimized.
That's your flood control clause.
I I would second that.
Luke, so Lucas, I have a question for you. Yeah, and I think I know the answer, but I know that somebody is gonna read it and they're going to go, well, it means this or that. But appropriate government agency would include subcontractors, correct?
Contractors for, you know, for.
I just wanted that to kind of go on record, because I know somebody's gonna come out and argue, well, that's not a, what's this guy doing out there? I just wanted to. Put that on record. Hey, any questions? Commissioner Moser.
I feel like this whole section's getting confusing from the first heading that's got, first part they got changed, now this one. And then based on what Jim's next motion is gonna be, this whole this whole section. I feel like re- is reading oddly now. It's like the section starts talking about. Doing something, but then we've changed it to where you can't do any of it in the section, so.
Well, yeah, the next motion is to delete all those.
No, I understand, then. Somebody should read the whole thing at the end and just make sure that it reads like a normal chapter, normal section in the in the chapter.
So, yeah, uh that's a good point. This this section is about, really about commercial harvesting of gravel from river beds. So that that's what all the policies are sort of specific to.
Commissioner Dunn. Um, if we were to delete this entire section. How would that impact? Policy, Mark.
Delete.
So this, I guess, what I'm hearing is. Mining gravel from the river is something that probably is not gonna happen. People have done for a long time, most likely won't happen in the future.
Commercially.
Commercially, yeah, not for 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 purposes, um do we need a policy about that? And what happened if we delete this entire policy?
Well, I guess that's where. Uh, the way it was originally proposed. Combine flood control and commercial purposes, which ties it back to the existing, you know. You can technically, there's a permit path to do this, but it's. Pretty much impossible to do. So we're, and and if if we if we get rid of commercial purposes. Well, then the rest of those policies are all about commercial purposes mostly.
Right.
So why have those policies? So I try to think of what you.
But that's what I'm thinking, yeah, so if you're saying, but I mean, you're saying there's a there's a permanent process, but but they can't do that, there's.
Well, I was saying you can't, I'm just saying. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be easy. I I think if I if I can speak on behalf of the Service of Mining Advisory Committee, I. When we went through the camp plan, they acknowledged that this was a very difficult area for their industry. They didn't want to really necessarily touch this particular section, they sort of just wanted to stay as is. Just in the event that some future application, there is a path still there. They want to eliminate the option.
Okay, it is technically legal if you convert your way around technically enough to get through.
Right, right.
Theoretical pathway.
Yeah, there and Danny's point, there is a contingent of people who very strongly. Support this or would like to do this. Uh, not so much no longer about commercial harvesting, it's about flood control. Right, they want to dredge the river to to make it floodless.
So that's what we're trying to, someone is trying to get to is to. Is there any reason to have anything in you whatsoever to uh enable the county? State to take flood control actions, maybe that's solely outside of this chapter.
It's a different, yeah, it's a different.
So the point of.
Tangent, yeah.
That's the point of just to leave the whole whole subsection. Seems a lot cleaner.
But you could tell us maybe a little more about why people want to, so they they want to keep it as like a, maybe we'll do this sometime in the future, but we probably won't, or. Okay.
Go ahead, all right.
Okay, so let's say, let's say all the surface mining of gravel gets. Were gravled out, whether it's shipped to Canada or here or locally.
Or the mining, yeah.
Yeah, all the all the surface gravel mining is gone, there's nothing left. Thirty years from now or twenty-five years from now, I can see where the point where they're going, man, we got, we got gravel here.
There isn't very much, though. There's really not that much.
I poured a lot of gravel from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-three from a certain company that. Mixes gravel in here, they screened it, they crushed it.
Back in the day.
They mixed it, again, nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-three. And and it's a lot of concrete, a lot of, and they were doing it far before nineteen eighty, I doubt it's just when I started. So it 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 has been done.
I mean, yeah, that, right, technologies change. Tech theoretically, there could be a way to, you know, they could invent a way to do it safer, better, more environmentally. In the future.
When they roads out of something else or not have roads, we're all flying around in gyrocopters.
There's Jensen's, right. Um, wait, so the mining advisory cap committee, their recommendation would be to kind of just kind of leave it alone.
I mean, they're proponents of gravel extraction, you know, their their position's gonna be to leave the door open, right?
Well, these are the same people I would button heads with. Fifteen, twenty years ago on flood advisory committee and their solution was the county should subsidize the permitting to the cost of two hundred thousand dollars a year. That thereby making it profitable for the gravel companies to to do this. Or scalping, and that just didn't really pencil out economically or environmentally, so it's hard. It's seeming environmental regulation become stricter rather than less strict over time, so I know. That's right. Yeah, there any more? Yeah, I think go ahead.
So. It should read like that for goal eight Q. This is how it should read if. If you put all of your changes, and I know Commissioner Moser was asking how would the goal read.
So that's, that was, that's the amendment.
We already did that, we.
That's that's the.
This is goal.
Eight Q.
Me in the brain.
Yeah, that's that's to, that's the change that HQ and the discussion evolved to, let's just get rid of the whole thing. Which would, I would support as being cleaner than trying to do Frankenstein on on this. That would be proposed as a substitute. Goal by Commissioner Dunn.
Um, I think I think from from, you know, uh thinking about the potential commercial lead. Way down the road, I can understand why they want to leave this thing here, so I think I probably would not make that motion to strike the entire, the entire thing.
I mean.
I would suggest sticking to the current motion before going on to the next suggested.
Thank you.
Please.
I think when when you read the motion to.
Yes, um so Commissioner Hanson moved to add after flood control purposes. Um, by appropriate governmental agencies and delete and commercial purposes to goal eight Q. And it will read, subject to federal and state regulations and support. Uh, sup- not and, state regulations support the extraction of gravel from river bars and stream channels. For flood control purposes by appropriate governmental agencies. Where adverse hydraulic and other environmental impacts. Um, sorry, are avoided or minimized.
Is there any?
And Commissioner Dunn second that.
Is there any additional can um discussion? I mean, what do you call the role, please?
Yes, Ben Dillon?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Moser?
No.
Barton?
I'm staying.
It passes.
Getting really really tired of the motions being the one, but uh the the final is to delete all eight Q policies. Because they 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 relate to something that will no longer be going on. And we're gonna ask that there's a second.
I'll second it.
So any discussion? Any discussion? Being there is no discussion, I mean, what do you call the role, please?
Yes, Brown?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
This kind of the policies, yeah.
Dunn?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Moser?
No.
Ben Dillon?
No.
Barton?
No.
That motion fails.
Um, let's even, so for um motions that I have, I think I removed a bunch of them. And kind of had this conversation about having a little more aggressive policy last time for ankle stuff, and so I'm just gonna skip those. Could you scroll, I'm sorry, no, if you scroll up? Up. Up, there we go, great, so we start here, um so these are the motions that I made last time. Um, so motion nineteen, and they scroll down through. Uh, all these here, did you do policy like that, or it was, we had this conversation last time, so I'm gonna skip those. Um, and what was on to uh motion twenty-four?
Yeah, I'll make a motion and it's uh eight G eighteen, which I'll need to find the page. On page eight twenty-seven. And it's uh policy eight G eighteen, full point nine. Uh, it is to remove the new language. Of consider rezoning properties in rural forestry to commercial forestry, so as to encour- encourage commercial forestry, all discourage. And discourage residential growth in forest areas. We kind of discussed this, and also this was a recommendation from the Forestry Advisory Committee.
Um, and I believe that is the ninth bullet point.
I thought I said ninth, but.
That I got right here, perfect. I can second that.
Is there any discussion? Is this eight, is it's eighteen, all right, a ball point nine, got you, okay. Make sure done.
Um, I support the motion, um just from earlier earlier discussion.
Any other prescription? And uh, do you know from my previous position? Hey, I mean, when you call the role, please.
Yes, Dunn?
Yes, uh, uh, yes, yes.
Hanson?
No.
Jefferson?
No.
Moser?
Yes.
Ben Dillon?
Yes.
Brown? Barton?
Yeah.
Passes.
Uh, Commissioners, this is a staff proposed revision to. Um, back, going back to the ag uh section, policy eight A fifteen. Um. This just adds a little bit of clarity, staff's been discussing about how with the cities, with a couple of the cities. Um, Everson and Nuksek in particular, how we would go about this. Um, as you know, the cities proposed, those cities that were proposed them to expand their UGA into. Um, designated ag lands, we have to go through this process under the GMA to de-designate, um you have to sort of. Say why that land is no longer meets the criteria for ag land and it can be converted to UGA. Um, that's the agricultural land assessment that staff is preparing based on those um city proposals. Uh, and evaluating those parcels that are proposed for de-designation. Um, but you have to do it under the state law and countywide as at the same time as you look at those individual parcels. So staff's doing that, as a part of that, you know, we've talked about the rural land studies that have been going on for a few years. Looking at potential other areas, not designated as ag land, but designated as rural or or tan uh on the map. Looking at potential other areas, not designated as ag land, but designated as rural or or tan uh, on the map. Um, that do have uh, strong agricultural characteristics. And potential for becoming ag lands of long-term commercial significance under GMA, in other words, possibly changing them from brown. Rezoning them from brown to green. That is a, that's the policy that precedes this, A A fourteen, I think, but. This one was looking specifically at um, mitigation. When that ag land is converted to UGA. Uh, and so the idea would be that we'd have, and I think it was Everson or Nuksek that proposed, Nuksek posed this. Language um, that they would pay a fee. Um, for every acre that was re-designated from ag to UGA. And then that fee would go into the county's conservation futures fund, which is a fund uh, that funds. Our conservation easement program in particular, that buys development rights off ag land. Um, so there's kind of the nexus, the the connection between applying the fee and and what the impact is, losing that ag land. You know, we have this hundred thousand acre goal um, in the comp plan to maintain a hundred thousand acres of ag land. Um, I think we have something like eighty eighty some thousand actually designated as green, as ag land, but. You look at the Ag Census that comes out every five years, uh, and that looks at um, uh, farms and ag use. That number is always over a hundred thousand acres, so there's there's acreage counted as ag that's in in rural basically. So um, it's it's an apples and oranges kind of a thing, but um. But the idea would be at least a start of mitigation program for the loss of ag lands. Uh, and and a way to preserve, uh, better preserve existing ag lands, so. This just adds some, a little bit of specification. Um, that when that happens, there was. The first paragraph mitigation is required, first of all, and secondly. When it's required, then under A, B, and C kind of spells out the when and the where of when that mitigation would be applied, so. There would need to be a uh, under A, we, first of all, it would say that land. It 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 would go from green to uh, purple on the map, right, goes from ag to UGA. But it would stay in ag zoning uh, until it was annexed by the city. And you know, we've we've had UGAs that that will sit there for twenty years sometimes and never be developed or haven't been developed to date. Or haven't been annexed, and so that at least guarantees that that land stays in ag use in the interim. But B, then um, there would be a mitigation require, uh, agreement required through a covenant on the on the particular property. Uh, between the owner of the property, the city and the county. To be filed with the author, so it runs with the land, it runs in perpetuity, even if it changed, if the land changes ownership. Uh, and it would be on the title, so right, a new, a new buyer, for example, would, this would be disclosed to them, they would. A fee would have to be paid, and then um, when the county officially, county council adopts that. Changes to this map and makes that designation change, there's a sixty day appeal period. Um, and so that's when this would sort of say, okay, you've got sixty days to sign that agreement. Uh, and that agreement would have to be signed prior to that sixty days. Uh, or the designation becomes null and void and it would refer it back to ag. Uh, so it kind of guarantees, there's a, there's a legal guarantee that there's going to be mitigation payment. Um, runs with the land, would not apply to parcels that are less than five acres. Uh, when there's an existing house or other structural improvements on the property. This is what was proposed by um, the cities. Uh, cause they have a couple of farmsteads, uh, Nuksek in particular, they're like three acres, two acres. It's a piece of a larger ag parcel, but it's just a farmstead, and that's all they want to propose to expand, to convert to UGA, not the field. Right, the good ag soil in the field that's actually producing crops. So this is intended to not require mitigation and for those really small lots that are coming in, they already have a house on and stuff.
Go ahead.
That last sentence, this requirement does not apply to re-designation, and should that say de-designations of five acres?
Uh, it can, yeah.
I'm I'm asking a question.
It's, they're, they're kind of the same, we just.
Oh, I see. Designating the five to the UGA, it's not saying de-designating five.
Cause that's already, that's already been done, up above, yeah, that's all.
I may not understand this correctly, but let's say a county decides that they're going to. Is designate this area as UGA. And I own some property there, but I would, I didn't necessarily want to develop it. Now, I'm now being asked to pay into mitigation fund. When maybe I didn't want, I personally didn't want to see my property. Redesignated, how, why is it the landlord's responsibility to pay for something that the county is doing?
Because the landlord is gonna be, going to receive a financial benefit. From that re-designation, right, the value per acre of ag land versus the value per acre of urban land.
They can pay higher taxes.
Well, it's just gonna, this land is gonna be worth a lot more.
When they sell it.
When they sell.
If they want to.
Develop it, yeah.
So if, if I didn't want to see it, and I said, well, heck with that, don't, let's not. De-designate me, you can't really have patches of of holdovers inside of a UGA, right?
You can have ag lands within UGAs, but they have to have their development rights expired. Uh, that's allowed, and so that's what Sumas, that's what Sumas is proposing, right, is. On their westward expansion, they have a big ag piece, but it's in flood, and so they have, they would, if they wanted to do that, to make it a contiguous expansion. And connect it to the existing city limits, they'd have to keep it in ag, but expire all the developments.
So I could put, I could sell the development rights on my four acre farm and keep it in ag in the midst of the UGA?
Yeah, theoretically.
If it was zone uh, five, for example, that's the way you have the developer's. Right, that's, yeah, it would still be.
It was ag, it's one to forty, so.
Would be forty, yeah.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be our five, cause it's not.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about placing a burden on landlords, is something that.
Yeah, all, all of the cities' proposals, right, that are on the table right now for Everson and Nuksek. Uh, and Sumas for that matter, um, you know, they tell us they've reached out to all those property owners and those property owners are. In agreement that they would like to be, oh, okay, included in the UGA, so I I, the the assumption is that. The city wouldn't propose that expansion unless the property owner was cooperative.
Okay, I did understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, you have a question, Mark, how important do you have?
That's it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
So that, I, I like this with the, with the point, you have your thoughts, they. Has to be followed within sixty days, the date the county council approves, it just strikes me as any number of things could. Screw up the sixty days.
So, our thinking is, and we would have to get, you know, we'd want to get agreement with the cities that they're, they like this concept, this approach. Um, there would be some details that would still need to be figured out, like what's, how are we gonna determine the price, what's the fee? There's a couple of different methodologies to do that, um, but um, the idea of the sixty days is. Is that we, we, if 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 approved, then we would know, and we would begin working with the legal folks. Our attorneys and the cities on a template, basically on the covenant. Agreement, so the idea is that we would have a sort of a draft template agreement. Um, by the time the compliance adopted, so that, starting on day one of sixty of the appeal period. We're not starting from scratch, we have, we have it worked out.
Right, but why are we, why is it, why is it such a hard short period?
Yeah, that's the appeal period. So nothing goes into effect. When that, when, when a complaint gets adopted, nothing really goes into effect for sixty days.
Yeah, I get that, but why, why? Why does the mitigation agreement, because the mitigation agreement is gonna be something that happens sometime, sometime down the track, right?
The mitigation agreement um. Shall be required and filed within sixty days. Of the adoption by the, by the council, so, so it's a date cert, right?
But are the two parties only the city and the county?
No, the city, the county, and the property owner.
Right, so. If you, for example, you have a property that's owned by four children of the original landlord, or they think, well, I'm not gonna get agreement in sixty. Right, yeah, so I'm just.
But again, the the assumption is from, our assumption is that the cities, what they've told us is that all the ones they're proposing to bring in. They've, they're in agreement with the property owner that they're about to fight him.
No, a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Is either extend the period beyond sixty days or trigger it to something else, but it's not actually a time period.
Yeah, well, so, one of the things the cities uh, were pretty adamant about is in C. They didn't want to pay the fee till the time of annexation.
Fair enough.
Right?
Yeah.
And and that's perfectly understandable, offensive, but from our perspective. They've said, well, let, you know, let's just not do this until we annex, and we're like, well, um, that could never happen. Right, we know there's lots of. UGAs that have never been annexed, so. Forty years go by, what, you know, who, who gets to remember this policy and that that fee is required and that. Mitigation agreement, that's why we required upfront within sixty days.
So would it, would it cause any grief if that was changed to a hundred and eighty days?
The, the problem there is, once you hit day sixty-one.
Yeah.
And if there's no appeal. Wh- what's the, what's the comeback, what's the fallback, right, why, why would I have to sign the agreement, you already designated me as UGA, I could just say, I'm out. I don't have to pay the fee. So and then, right, there needs to be a legal sort of a hook there, so that's what the sixty day thing is. So again, the idea is that we have this worked out ahead of time with a template, some of the cities have done this with, with flood properties already. Um, where there's a portion of a flood plain on a parcel that they're bringing into the UGA.
Yeah.
And they require a covenant on that property with the property owner that says, that. Piece of the property that's in the flood plain, which you can't expand into under GMA. You won't develop, it'll be, it'll have a restricted covenant, basically, conservation easement says you can't, you can't develop that piece of the property.
Well, but if I have to do this agreement, sorry, it's me, I have to do this agreement within sixty days and there's an appeal. Now I've signed the agreement, accorded the agreement, but it's being appealed.
Yeah, well, that, there would be legal language and covenant that would address that, right, so unless there's an appeal and. Nothing, you don't have to pay the fee until, well, you don't pay the fee until annexation anyway, but. It might be null and void, because that might be the very thing that was appealed, was that de-designation, right?
Right.
So you kind of, you have to tie it to that, that's why you have to tie it to that. Yeah.
Commissioner Brown. Um, I was just looking at the, the WAC for this, um, three, six, five, one, nine, oh, zero, five, zero. And it's pretty clear onto how you classify and designate uh, lands, it does talk about, does use the word de-designation. But it doesn't really talk about like, how you do designate, um, for designate lands, got. A number of things to do, including, you know, item C, the land has long-term course significance for agriculture. Intermittent factor, counties, cities should consider the following, none of some criteria, it's got like eleven things to look at there.
Right.
So when you de-designate, could you walk me through how you, like, what are the factors you use to de-designate?
It's the same criteria as the designation criteria, but you just reach a different conclusion, right? Than you did the first time when you designated it green, now you're looking at it at a much later date, and it's. Changed circumstances is the legal term, you say, oh, things have changed in twenty years since we designated that as ag. Quite often, and and this is especially true for ag parcels that are adjacent to cities, right, or urban areas. That uh, they do become more margin, because of increased trapping, uh, increased stormwater is a big one. Off of those impervious surfaces next door that tend to degrade the farm. Or increase flooding or increase drainage issue, and the farmer's farm just says, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, go ahead, annex me and. Urbanize me undone, so that's, that's kind of the analysis we're going through, is looking at the characteristics of these. But there's court cases that have said. Uh, that you can't look solely at that one criteria that it is, you know, characterized by urban growth now. As that's the reason to de-designate, so it's very subjective. It's not, it's not a bright line at all, and it's quite reticent also, so.
Okay, so when you de-designate, it's that things have changed, hey, twenty years ago, land was like this, that's what changes like this. Um, so I guess the question would be, if you're de-designating because things have changed, why would we need to pay a? Fee for that, why not just say, hey, you know what, things have changed, we're de-designating, great, done, there you go.
An argument.
So what, tell me, tell me more, why, why, why pay, why would somebody, cause that way you kind of, it kind of feels a little bit like you're saying, hey, listen, tip for tat. You pay me some money, I'll go and de-designate your land, we'll say the right words here, whereas if you didn't have a fee, it'd be much more clear, like, hey, look, things really changed. We make legitimate de-designation.
There's no, there's no um, legal argument that this, this contributes to de-designation, right, all we're saying is, we're losing green. And in this case, it's because we gained in orange and and you were urbanizing that land, right, which is why. The GMA, one of the reasons GMA exists in the first place, right? Was because we were losing ag land, and we hear about it constantly, like, keep losing ag land and keep losing ag land, so, let's do something about it. You know, this doesn't do a lot, but it creates a funding source. Uh, for buying conservation, buying development rights off of other ag lands, to preserve them from being urbanized. Uh, and that, that's the nexus. But yes, we have to reach a conclusion that it's de-designated, but otherwise it's like, okay, and then we're gonna, if cities are gonna continue to grow. And they're surrounded by ag lands, as most of our small cities are, then it's just a big complete, right?
Oh, so, I, I want to interrupt there a minute, cause we can go on, whether, whether, when, we have about four minutes left. I think Commissioner Moserri and then Commissioner Hand.
Oh, you're first.
I was just gonna say, I think it, doesn't it help with potential challenges on, on when that land's getting, if it's getting. Converted and turned into the UGA, you can say, well, we're making it up in other places because we got this funding. So it may, it's gonna make it more defensible that those small cities have moved into some of those areas.
Right.
Say, you were, were you just funny to him?
But yeah, I just wanted to move that we adopt this policy eighty dash fifteen as on the board.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second, do we have any discussion? I mean, when you call the role please.
Yes.
We asked it, yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Moserri.
Yes.
Ben Dylan.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
Passes.
No, is there another one here that didn't come out of the printout, the number sixteen?
Um, I had some that I sent in late in the day, which I think are below there. Um, is, are these the last ones?
Uh, is this showing on screen right here, what I'm highlighting?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, yeah, those were the last ones that I received.
Was there another one you proposed?
No, no, I think these are all.
I have something I want to forget.
Yes, so I guess my question would be, do we want to kind of plow ahead with this and go past nine o'clock, or do we want to like, pause here and come back for? A quick thing at our next meeting or in the future? So I got these, some of these are actually redundant, um, and then, Rod, if you got some.
I, I'm just gonna for a brief request for stuff. Mark.
Yeah.
So I was thinking about the ADU issue.
Yeah.
The one thing we have, result, I didn't approve, solved as if, if Farmer Smith has a house. Farmer Smith gets approved for an ADU and lives there for ten years and uses the ADU for whatever. Ten years, and then they sell or retire or die, what happens to the ADU? What, what, I don't want us to be ripping stuff out of the ground.
No.
But there's nothing in the language that allows it to stay there, so good.
There's nothing in the language that prohibit, that, that does anything.
Wondering if we want to, well, so make a request to staff, is do we need to provide clarity of what happens?
We, um. I, I, I mentioned that um, WAC, Washington State Association of Counties has been promoting. Pushing a bill in the legislature for uh, to equalize uh, cover, local government. County regulation of ADUs outside of UGAs on rural and resource lands, and that hasn't passed yet. Um, like they did the UGA bill that we just did, and so that's why there's a difference right now, and. Uh, we can, we can look into that, but that's what I'm asking the state legislature for. Is enabling legislation that gives us, called safe harbor, right, so we can change our regs, get rid of that. Right? So we can change our regs, get rid of that requirement and not open the regs back up to be challenged.
Yeah.
We're running.
We're just whip through these.
Can you do crank them out?
I I think so. I mean, that's up to you guys, but yeah.
Well, that's up to us, how much we want to talk.
What, is it okay if I just?
Well, let's try one.
Okay, we'll try one. All right, sounds good. Um, first one is.
Three minutes.
First one is correct RCW, um, and the correct thing was uh seventy-six point oh nine, the old one is seventy-six point oh six. I see a note there, the staff corrected that.
Yep, we already did that.
Great, we're gonna make motion, I'm good to go. Next.
It's done.
Good, good, done. Uh, next one, uh kind of scripters, uh there's one page, we're talking about clustering. This was from Paul Conwell, we got um on. Hmm, I'm on line twenty-seven. Uh, and it, on one page, it says, um, oh, you can cluster up to thirty percent. And the other page it says you can cluster between twenty and thirty percent. So it's just saying on both pages, you can cluster up to thirty percent. It's about where you put housing on a a property and you kind of swish it in one area and just say, keep it on thirty percent.
So as shown on screen, this is the first uh policy eight D that is being discussed, and then this is from the page. Um, that's mentioned in that's the the paragraph.
So it's a require non-agriculture-related development to be clustered on up to thirty percent. Of the land, as it reads now, it just says to be clustered on twenty or up to thirty percent. That tells like you have to keep it between twenty and thirty versus you can have it from zero to thirty.
I would second that.
I think, yeah, I I think that's, that's a good one, right?
That's, yeah, yeah.
So or.
You take care of that, Lucas?
I think, I think we have. Oh, we're, okay, all right, we'll do a staff correct the thing. Sweet. Um, next one.
Very good, Don.
This is in the, yeah, yeah, I don't want to do this one, I think, right? Sweet, that's done. Um, next one is twenty-nine, tenth ball point, we just language placed with. New vote. Oh, yes, this is from the Forest Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Um, and this is their request to just change the language a little bit. They said they wanted to specifically use the words, a quote, forest collaborative. That'll help facilitate expanded timber harvest and forest. I don't really know much about it, but it made sense to me, so that's my motion.
Second.
We, we have a long ten second. Comments?
I think you know what they're doing, and I think they want to see us work with the federal government.
They uh. I want to say see none, but I do know that Commissioner Hansen made a comment there.
Yeah, he said, it seems like it's sensible. Uh, Forest Service owns most of the property in Waukesha County and not working with them collaboratively is, that makes sense, so I support this.
If you, if you, if I've taped, no one has an objection, we can just, you just, we'll do it. Yeah, great, that's good.
Yeah, all right, moving on. Uh, my next one is um to add a new policy, which is eight G twenty-one. Uh, this is also from the Forest Advisory um Committee. It says to expand the commercial forest land base by incentivizing the forestation and follow. Farm fields, floodplains, et cetera, support forest conservation programs that promote a forestation, reforestation, and climate adaptive forest management. That's my motion. Thank you. Can I turn around?
Strongly opposed.
What?
I'll tell you why. Um, once you, once you, once you play.
I I want to roll, huh? All right, go.
I'm not smiling back. Come on, I hope you met someone in your retirement.
You've got three pedals changed, you're using your three pedals, calm down.
So bottom line is, is if if the land has fallen and you plant a breeze on it, after a certain period of time, it can no longer go back into ag. After about, I think, the five-year rule, it can no longer go back into ag. So what you're doing is you're taking land out of ag permanently for forestry. That may not necessarily be good forestry. So I, we keep saying we want to preserve ag land, this is exactly the opposite, it's a lot the exact opposite effect.
They'd like trees.
I do like trees. But I don't want to take, I I my preference is not to take prime fag from farmland. And turn it into forestry. That being said, you want to do wetlands mitigation, that's not what you have to do.
All right.
Because the wetland rules, so. That's my opinion.
What, why don't we just vote, I think, add a motion, I think, add a second? You have a little speed round?
Yes.
I think, I think you better call a roll on this one.
Yes, I was going to suggest that. Hanson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
What's there?
Yes.
Van Daylen.
Yes.
Brown.
No.
Dan.
Yes.
Brown, oh Barton.
No.
Passes.
Sweet, and our last one is motion page eight thirty-one in the second paragraph. To delete a sentence. Uh, because it's redundant, um sentences, the Growth Management Act requires each county planning under the act. Should designate mineral resource lands, and that is just the same as the sentence that was above.
And you know, where?
Um, I'm I'm pulling up here, yeah. Uh, so, oh, you said the top of PG thirty-one.
Yes, it's on the screen.
Oh, uh, uh, up at the top there, scroll up. Oh. Wait. Eight thirty-one.
Did it, did it go to eight thirty-two? Maybe rolled over?
Oh, maybe, um, yeah, it's in, uh, try.
That's where I saw the GMA right there, yeah.
Edition check, yes. Yeah, yeah, so it's just, it's just here. So um highlight area, in addition, GMA mandates each country. Clearly classified mineral resource lands, designate certain appropriate areas, da-da-da, characterize, da-da-da. And then the next paragraph says, same thing, which is the Growth Management Act requires each county playing under the act. Should designate mineral resource lands.
Okay.
So I just, I mean, neither one of them, but just delete one.
Delete the se-
The second one.
The second sentence?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, highlight, the Growth Management Act, it requires each.
The the first sentence in that, yeah, right there, there you go. Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. And we want to pull it on that.
General concern.
By acclamation, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Done, nice job, guys.
Oh, oh, wait, oh, wait, oh, you want to, yeah, sorry, never mind. I, I, I would make a motion that we primarily approve this, send this on to council as amended. Chapter eight, resource land.
I'll second.
Oh, my God.
Awesome.
Good job.
Not to get that done.
Good job, Don. I think you need to call a roll, please.
Yes, Jefferson.
Yes.
What's there?
Yes.
Van Daylen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yeah.
Barton.
Yeah.
Passes.
Hey, uh, the only issue I have is, um, when do our overtime checks come?
It's in the mail, along with your regular.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, contributors. See you next Thursday.
See you every Thursday, same, same back time, same back channel.
Really bring some more, and they come in.
But that's the way, that, that is what, you know, that's how the modern.
No, I gotta tell you, I didn't do it very often, but every now and then there'll be a topic that came up.
So we're back at ball, okay?
At the bathroom.
Pop that crowd. And the, the lower crowd, they're okay for between eight and ten feet tall.
I'm gonna ask that you go for, by every single place has bullet points, and we can let them, split all the bullet points.
No.
Like A, B, C, D, one, two, three.
Yeah, 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 right, river, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that refill, that is amazing.
But maybe, yeah, yeah, you're going through it, yeah. It makes easier to go through.
Which bullet point? Well, I don't know, I gotta count, yeah.
But I totally get why.
Yeah, well, that was not so much, could they, yeah.